The sound dissipates by...
Several hundred yards.
Yeah. And so therefore, if you have this distance, it's six dB higher than, so if you're on Mary Matthews property, it's exceeded.
I heard he's trying to buy you.
I think that's not gonna happen. I talked to him. I met with him the other day.
But our stuff is from the point where the people are here.
Oh, they have a good place.
Right. The ones that cross the river though.
I know. I don't know which way to go sometimes.
I know Harley's in the hall. Let's try to get him in.
Well, he was just here a second ago.
There you go. Morning, sir. Good morning. It is Monday, December the fourteenth, two thousand twenty, nine o'clock in the morning, and Kirk County Commissioners' Court is now in session. This is a regular meeting. We do not have a special meeting next Monday, so the meeting after this will be on Monday, the twenty-eighth, after Christmas. So with that, I don't know whose day is it for the hearing.
It's mine.
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 Okay. Would please stand.
Pray with me if you will, please. Dear Lord, thank you for this wonderful place that we live. Our county is special. We do need rain. And dear Lord, ask that you consider the United States of America. This republic was founded by divine guidance, I'm convinced. We need your guidance now as we proceed to finish the election for so many offices. And please guide all of those that are helping us do that. In Christ's name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You see it. Reminder for everyone to turn your phone to vibrate so that it doesn't interrupt the meeting. First part of our agenda every week, every time that we meet, is to have public input, and this is an opportunity for the public to offer their input to the court. The court does not get to respond to the input, but to get to hear it. We ask that anyone that would like to provide input to the court not speak on something that's on the agenda. If it's on the agenda, we ask that you wait and address the court when that agenda item is called. But is there anyone who would like to address the court at this time? Okay, there being none, and the next part of the agenda is the Commissioners' input. Let's go with Precinct One.
Burn ban for Precinct One. That's the news. Waited, waited, hoped for rain, got a little sprinkle, so it's time.
Okay. Good to know. Burn ban in Precinct One. Precinct Two?
Burn ban in Precinct Two for several weeks now. And we had a shower. A meteor shower. We didn't get any rain, but we got... I was out at five o'clock this morning to look at the big meteor thing. I think I saw ten meteorites in about thirty minutes, which was good. And I think it was in response to Don Harris' birthday today.
Bound to it.
And one other thing, I've mentioned the last several meetings about aggregate manning, still going on, New Quarry. There's an organization that some people in Precinct Two are participating in. It's called Texans for Responsible Aggregate Manning. It's an organization made up of thirty-two counties, okay? Thirty-two counties are participating, not just the counties are participating. So it's to try and put some reasonableness on this type of thing. A lot of states in the United States have this. So this is an effort to try and not force, but to get the aggregate miners to do things that are being good neighbors. So more to come on that. And there's been a TCEQ application for a permanent rock crusher on the New Quarry. And there will be a request for a public meeting, not hearing, but a public meeting on that. So anyway, things are going on in Precinct Two, in the sky and below the earth.
Good to know. Precinct Three?
I will be putting the burn ban on the day of six. It's not been hours. We have had a little bit of rain here and there. The winds yesterday dried it out a great deal. And I think I mentioned this before, but the Water Development Board's been working on it to get flood planning groups. Kirk County has eight representatives, a little bit disappointed on the makeup of the committee. Percy's doing a great job, it's Joseph B. Daniel, who's up in Texas. But they pretty much shunned Kendall and Kirk County when it came to the people on that committee, which was a bit of a surprise.
I see where they asked for volunteers, though. They're not an application out there.
Right. We're looking at, they're looking at possibly expanding their membership a little bit. That's being looked at. But the main thing is that they did request to know what flood studies are currently underway throughout their region, which is the well of the basin. I replied, and I'm having Commissioner Moser, I recommended him to make some presentations. He doesn't know this.
He does now.
The early flood warning system that he was very much involved with, the flooding issue that Techstock, Culvers under the road, but they're blocked off partially in Center Point area. I put on the list. East of that, there's some other problems more in my precinct. And then the flooding issue in Comfort, which is a joint Kendall County, Kirk County, because all the water comes from Kerr, even though the flooding doesn't damage Kendall. I put those on there and listed likely presenters would be Commissioner Moser, myself, Charlie Hastings, John Hewitt, and Don Durden, who's through Kendall County. So they're gonna schedule it, and that'll be sometime next year, that those presentations will be requested.
Now, the last FEMA flood study was 2011, the one we're operating off of now.
They update it continuously. They're always updating different parts of it.
Different parts of it, and so it gets overlaid and everything. It's not easy to...
Right. They change pieces as they update.
We looked at that, and then I think we were trying to, in Kirk County, that it was gonna cost a million bucks. Yeah. So...
Well, a lot of people like to put money in it.
Anyway, let's all add. Happy birthday.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Hey, birthday boy. Precinct Four.
Dry. Windy and dry, and so... Don't light any candles. Exactly. Especially that many... That many candles.
Hey, watch them.
But anyway, as we get into the Christmas season, I just want to urge everybody to be careful and responsible in what they do. We're not gonna meet till after Christmas again, so be careful.
Oh, yeah.
So, all right, that's all I got.
Okay. Very good. And let's move on to our agenda. Item one point one is to discuss the status of Ingram City Council and resignations. I see that Ryder's here. Would please, we don't have any action item here, but Ingram is one of the cities in our county, and we want to be informed and work with you to do whatever needs to be done.
Well, I appreciate that, Judge Terry. Basically...
Would you identify yourself as a public number?
Yes. I'm Kathy Ryder. I am now the newly appointed mayor of the city of Ingram, as of Thursday. And so I've been working closely. We have, as of Thursday night, also appointed a chief of police now, which is Carol Twist. You're all familiar with her. Many years of experience, very good investigator, a strong leader. So I think that was a step in the right direction towards rebuilding our police department. She's very knowledgeable. All of our police, every one of them quit, including the administrative assistant. So we have started taking applications to rebuild the department. We've been working with Sheriff Eric Holzer and the incoming Sheriff Letha, and they've both been very generous, been very helpful. They're covering our shortfalls in the interim. And we're moving forward. There's been a lot of talk and discussion, why did this happen? What's the root cause of this? And Rusty can tell you, Ingram goes through cycles of things like this every few years or every so many years. Things blow up and happen, and you just kinda gotta repair them and move forward. Ingram's been having some real growing pains in the last ten years, and people don't like change. And ultimately, that was the root cause of all the infighting and the hurt feelings, and then this and that. The implementation of the wastewater system has been rough at times, and there's been some resistance to it. It was a necessary change that we had to make moving forward. I think Precinct Two's fixed and has already started on theirs, and we'll probably face some of the same issues we've faced. But people get their personal feelings involved, and people get their feelings hurt, and sometimes grudges are held. The reason I stepped up and offered to take over as mayor was because I have worked both at the police department and City Hall, and I have a long history with the police department. At one time, years ago, my father was the marshal in the city of Ingram. So I'm very familiar with the operation of the Ingram Police Department, and I felt like there was no one else, we're limited to only who's a resident of the city of Ingram for council members and a mayor. I felt like there was no one else who had the experience of knowing the inner workings of both departments that could step up and take over, and that's why I volunteered to do it. I have no dog in the hunt for either the police department or the wastewater system and the ongoing problems they were having with each other. I kinda feel like I can be independent and have an independent point of view and bring that forward, and hopefully we can settle some of the ongoing lawsuits, is my hope, that we can settle that and lead with our citizens and not continue to fight each other. That's my, and those are lofty goals. I've been, thank you, Kerrville Daily Times for pointing that out. But yes, they're lofty goals, but those are my goals. We've gotta put this behind us and move forward, because right now, the only people that benefit from everyone fighting is the attorneys. And we've...
Amen to that.
We've gotta stop.
Kathy, will that be like a public forum kind of thing, or are you gonna just negotiate with people?
I don't know that it can be a public forum with the ongoing lawsuits, because they've been in the course of action for several years now. I'm reaching out to our attorneys, hopefully today or this week, to make a suggestion and reach out with an olive branch to our citizens. Because I'd like to see that's causing some of the dust-up with some of our current sitting council members that were elected by the people and some of our local business owners. And we do not want to fight our business owners and our citizens, I don't think, because nobody wins.
Kathy, can you give us any insight into the change in the form of governance in Ingram? I know that they were a city manager-type city under the local government code, and they changed from that back to the city council.
Yes.
And the mayor being the executive officer of the city.
Yes. They removed the city administrator position, so basically, that has put me in the position to be responsible for most of the day-to-day operations. That was part of the difficulty they were having. The chief of police we had, which was Chief Griffin, did not feel like he could answer to a sitting council like Commissioners' Court, like y'all do. He only wanted to answer to one person. When I stepped up as mayor, I made the offer to be the spokesman and the go-between, so he didn't have to go to each council member. The concern was that a council member would walk into the police department on any given day and give orders to the chief of police, and that was never the intention, is my understanding. And obviously, that cannot work. You know, each commissioner couldn't go into Rusty's office and tell him on any given day, I want you to do X, Y, and Z.
Oh, with pride.
He's like...
Works the other way around.
Well, if he were employed, you know, as an employee, it could cause chaos, and I appreciate that thought process. And that's why I said I would be willing to be the person that the chief can come to in lieu of having council members just walk in any given... And I don't think that's their intention. I think their intention by removing the city administrator position, they felt like they were not all getting information in an equal manner, and it served to cause a little bit more chaos in the city. In theory, it should remove the chaos and make it streamlined and run better, but in the situation we ran, it really did tend to cause more chaos and more confusion and more problems. So now the sitting councilmen members will have an active, ongoing knowledge. The chief of police we brought in, Chief Twist, has said, you know, I will give you updates on what we're doing daily if that's what y'all want. You know, I have no problem communicating with y'all. And so, so far, it's worked really well, and I don't foresee any major problems. Because, and that's why I suggested a strong chief.
And so that the public understands, members and citizens of the county, the administrative duties that your city manager, administrator once did now fall into your shoulders?
Yes. Yes.
That's a big job.
Yes, it is.
And as you know, as a county judge, one of my main duties is to be the chief budget officer of the county, financial officer of the county. And I think you are a counterpart in Ingram for us now.
Yes.
And I've taken a brief look at your financials. I think you've got your hands full.
Yes, I do.
We wish you the best. We do have certain resources here, at least to be able to look and analyze some of the numbers if you need some help on that. We can't tell you what to do.
No. I appreciate the offer.
But I do sit down with our auditor on a regular basis, and as you start this, if you have questions, feel free to give us a call, because we're here to help.
Yes, and I would like to use this public forum to dispel some rumors, if I may.
Allow me, please.
The rumor is so rampant that the newly-elected city council is going to disband the city of Ingram and unincorporate, and that is absolutely not the case. They would like to get the budget under control. They would like to cut spending. They would, we are now operating in a deficit budget, and I don't know that the public's aware of that, have been for a couple of years. And so our goal is to no longer be running in the red and get back to where we have a balanced budget. And I think that has created the rumors of disbanding the city and doing away with the city. That kinda led into that. There's no intention of doing away with the police department and defunding the police department. Responsible spending is not defunding. Those are night and day, completely different things. Defunding is a political movement, and that's not what this is. This is getting spending under control.
What's the population of Ingram?
It's eighteen-hundred-and-fifty-seven people.
Kathy, one, thank you for stepping up. I think it's a great job, and I appreciate you taking on because they needed someone to have the knowledge you have. And so appreciate that. The second thing is be wary of open meetings rules.
Yes.
The way you all are set up right now makes it very difficult for you to communicate and work. And counsel, and just be, not just a caution, just be very careful of violating those rules, because the people are very prejudiced on both sides in Ingram right now. They're gonna be looking for that issue, I suspect.
We, yes, I'm aware of that, and that actually came up in the December first council meeting and was very heated, because our council used to operate in committees, and each committee had a project. And I had an idea about resolving that and doing public workshops, where the public can come in and, in the important big issues, we can do a workshop on, an open, public, posted workshop, where anybody can come and watch. And hopefully, I've reached out to the lawyers to see if we're able to operate in that manner, where we're not fumbling through a city council meeting, trying to handle business awkwardly through a city council meeting, and we can maybe do some, like we used to do the budget workshops. And I hope that will coincide with the new law and keep us from being in trouble for open meetings, so...
Good luck.
Hopefully that works.
Kathy, just to clarify, Ingram has what, five city councilmen and a mayor?
Yes, we have five city councilmen and a mayor, and we've got one council position open currently that has yet to be filled. And my understanding is we're fixing to have another councilperson resign. So if...
So two seats?
We potentially will have two seats. He has not resigned yet, but my understanding is this is coming.
Well, so the public will understand, on the court, we have four commissioners and a judge. There's five of us, and the majority vote carries today. In Ingram, you've got five city councilmen that have a vote, but a mayor who does not.
Exactly. I do not have a vote. The only time I would ever vote is in the event of a tie, and that rarely happens because of the way it's set up.
Right. So you really have all the responsibility and very little say when it comes to voting?
I have almost no say. Potentially no say.
And a tip I do get about the Open Meeting Act, one of the things, I learned a whole new phrase when I took this job. I learned to tap out. And when you talk to one other person, for us, we're tapped out. If we talk to the third person, then we've got a quorum. And it can be a walking quorum. And our county attorney severely chastises us if we make those mistakes and reminds us not to do it on a regular basis. And I frequently start my conversations with my fellow commissioners. I'm gonna tap out with you, so I know who I've tapped out with on what issues. And I just give you that as a tip, if you start talking. You don't tap out because you don't have a vote. They tap out. You can talk to anybody, as I am sure.
Kathy, uh...
Everybody lives in another house.
Kathy, with all the resignations you have in the police department and what have you, I've just heard the smarter that some of them that we're gonna leave as of the third or fourth of January are maybe gone now.
That's exactly true.
I know that Rusty's offered to, you know, be the safety net through the first of the year, but it looks like it's gonna, you're gonna be shorthanded well into the new year for a while.
I was just talking with Rusty about this. We have someone who's offered to step forward and help Carol out in the short term, and that's your newly-elected Precinct Four constable. He's helping answer calls and just kinda keeping our head above water until he gets sworn in on the first as the constable.
And you're pretty close to him, if I remember right.
Yes, I'm pretty close to him. That's my husband. But he's offered to step up and help out. And when he gets sworn in as the constable, he's also gonna continue to help her out as long as she needs. But I really, I really feel like, and I've gotta credit Brad with saying this, he's always said that the little police department there in the city of Ingram has the potential to be the star of the hill country. It really has the potential to be something special, and hopefully, Chief Twist can make that happen. And then the county could be asking us if we can help out.
Well, I think where I was going with this is, you know, we wanna be there to help, but after a while, it gets to be astray. And, you know, I always said, you know, even with the rumors, which are not true, let's stomp that out, that y'all are defunding the police and everything, well, the county just pick it up. And I always said, well, that would have to be negotiated at some point.
Oh, absolutely.
And going forward in the first of the year, we may have to get our county attorney to get involved and draw something up.
I've cautioned them that, what's not understood is, the term I keep hearing thrown about is, well, we pay county taxes, and that's not what our county taxes are paid for. And I understand that, and I appreciate where you're coming from. And we're not going to burden y'all any longer than we have to. And I don't think everyone understands that we could not afford probably to, in lieu of having a police department, pay the sheriff's office for services, because there's a problem of availability of officers. Precinct Four is the biggest precinct in the county, and it's a huge expanse. So we will put a burden on the county sheriff's office by, if something major happens in Ingram, and sometimes it does, if their west officer is tied up on something major, they could have two or three officers tied up on something major, and then you have something major go down in the city of Ingram, which will pull officers from the other parts of the county and leave them exposed. And it's just not a good working system. Ingram is really truly busy enough to maintain its own police department, and it would just, it would weaken law enforcement in the west end of the county if we chose to pay the county for services in lieu of having a department. There's just too much going on to do that.
Kathy, as you know, I go through Ingram at least twice a day, sometimes four. I'm three miles, three and a half miles west. I really think that we, our hearts go out to you at this point. You've got a big problem that you're tackling. And I think from the county's viewpoint, what we wanna do is keep lines of communication open and cooperate. We're not here to fight with one another, just like your councilmen are not there to fight with each other. They may have differences of opinion. But this is a time for us to work together at every level and try to make things better for, especially the people in West curb County where you are.
Yes, and you point out that you drive through town and something, I've recently met with the superintendent of schools and explained to him that, you know, the school, the folks that drive through Ingram, you may not have a business in Ingram, you may not be a citizen, but if you live within a few miles radius of Ingram, or if you shop in Ingram, or if you even drive through our town, you have a vested interest in our police department and how our business runs. Just because you're not a voting citizen doesn't mean you don't have a vested interest in Ingram, and I appreciate that. And, you know, any given day, someone just traveling through, a tourist or a visitor could get killed on the highway, and I understand that. And so that's why, one of the reasons I feel it's important to step up and try to sort this out as quickly as possible.
In fact, I think it was a little over a week ago that I was at a meeting there in Ingram with some of your local leaders. Right about the time that all of this started. And as we looked around the room, and we're trying to help with this problem, we noted that none of us live in the city limits of Ingram, but we're there because we're affected by it, and we're all in this together, and we're with you.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
I wanna give you one piece of advice. Do your own messaging. Put your own information out. Don't count on the local media guys to get it right.
Okay.
Take charge of that, whether it's social media, whether it's press releases, because you have real issues to deal with, and you don't need misinformation. That only makes it more difficult. So take charge of that. That's my advice. If you got a person that can do it and is capable. We did it in the county, and it has been very beneficial to get information out ahead of rumor.
I'll take that and use it.
Yeah, I think anybody that, I know there's some social media pages that I think ought to, I don't know how you do it, but get rid of whoever is gone for posting anything else.
That's been taken care of. I took care of that last week.
Okay, very good.
Sheriff, you have anything?
Yeah. The only thing I want to say, and I can't speak for after January one, but at least between now and January one, I have offered to the mayor of Ingram to any help that we can possibly do. We've already sent Bulletproof Fest up there. Uh, we've already sent Bulletproof Fest up there. Their phones primarily, if they're not in office, uh, are all being transferred to our office. We're entering all their phone calls. Uh, we are running calls now that... Their officer ran one last night. He informed mine that, that was the last one he had. So, uh, it is, you know, on us to, to try and help out and I think we should for the citizenship. I do, and I have even heard a while back from one of their newer city councilmen that said, "Well, it doesn't matter 'cause we pay county taxes, so the county has to step in and take over because that's what our county taxes are paid for." And as Kathy alluded, and one thing I think the citizens of Ingram do need to know is that's not what their county taxes are paid for, okay? Once they incorporate it. The county tax part is totally different than what the city taxes are, just like Curville. I had a Curville city councilman tell me that same thing one time, is that they are double taxed and so the county can deal with it. I'll put it this way, and in criminal justice, it's simple and I can make a real quick explanation of it. Say you have a homicide inside the city of Ingram and you have a homeless person that ends up killing somebody else, okay? The city of Ingram Police Department sends an investigator out to investigate that. An autopsy has to be performed. The county pays for that autopsy, okay, including toxicology and everything else on the, on the deceased. The suspect took off to California or San Antonio or wherever. City of Ingram gets a arrest warrant for the suspect. Soon as they get that arrest warrant, now it's the county's responsibility to go get him arrested and bring him back. It's the county's responsibility, because it was on a warrant, okay, to house him in a county jail. It doesn't cost the city of Ingram one dime to house that person arrested on a warrant in a county jail. It's the county's responsibility to take care of that inmate's medical problems, not the city taxes of Ingram, okay? Then once you finally do get to trial or anything else, the county pays for the courtroom and the judges and the juries and all the expert witnesses and, and every, every bit of that is the county's responsibility. The only thing the city of Ingram would have to pay for, the city of Curville if it was out, is that initial officer going to that crime scene. The rest of it's on the county.
And if that, if that murder victim is indigent, the county bears it?
The county, well, the county, not only does the county have to pay the coppers due, the, the person, the suspect has to have an attorney, okay? And y'all are going through that with the, like the indigent, the county pays for that defense attorney.
Sure.
And pays for all the appeals, okay?
Pays for prosecution and defense.
Okay, but yeah, every bit of it.
And the, and, and the judicial.
Not the city taxes at all and I'm not picking on Ingram, I, you know, the city of Curville too, I think they, they need to understand that.
Sure.
And then you look at the other parts of it. All the property deeds in the city of Ingram are kept where?
County clerk.
County clerk takes care of all that and keeps records of all those deeds, okay? All the death certificates, birth certificates are kept by our county clerk, right? Meeple registrations done by the tax assessor. So, people have a real misconception of what their county taxes and what their city taxes pay for and it's, it's day and night, it's two, two totally different things. So, like right now, in, in my department, I know hiring officers is not an easy task and it takes a lot because you don't want, you know, to get bad officers either and there, there's a lot of requirements. And Carol can probably do it a lot quicker than we can, but it takes us normally a minimum of about two months to get one person hired. To cover the city of Ingram 24 hours a day with just one officer on duty by the national statistics and everything else, it's five people. So it's gonna take five officers to fill one position 24 hours a day and that's because of training, vacation, sick, all the rest of that you have to figure in, that's the number of officers you've got to have just to fill one position. And so it's going to take some time for the city of Ingram to get all that done. Now, I think in the transition and emergency situation they got, that it's, would be irresponsible for the, the county or the sheriff's office not to just step in and do what we gotta do. But if it does end up being longer to where they go back to not having 24-hour service and things like that, at that point, I would say it's time for the county leaders, me and Heather and them and the city leaders, uh, to get together and start looking at the contract like we have with the, the dispatch contract because it does draw a lot on the, on the sheriff's office resources and could end up costing us more in trying to fulfill those obligations for. But other than that, Ingram has my prayers, okay? Because it's, it's not an easy road, you know? I've been with our department years ago and I had five officers walk out at one time, you know, not prior to my being sheriff, but even in the sheriff's department, that makes it harder. And when we have what they had happen, I can tell them right now, the citizens can feel comfortable, we're gonna be there to help fill in that gap. I know Carol and, and the ones she's got trying to help take calls is one thing too, but, uh, the rest of them is gonna be covered by the sheriff's office. The citizens need to know, you know, we're gonna be there, period.
Good.
Thank you.
Again, cooperation.
Yes.
Anything else on this, this was a discussion item. We thank you for coming to talk to us and, uh...
Thank you.
Anytime you need to get information to us, feel free to come back.
Okay, I will thank you very much. Thank y'all for having me.
Thanks Kathy.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, uh, is 1.2 and I think Mary Roar is out in the hallway.
She is.
She was bundled up when I saw her. But 1.2... There she is, good morning.
Good morning.
Call item 1.2, consider discuss and take appropriate action on request from the Curville-Kirke County Joint Airport Board regarding, one, a declaration of emergency expenditure, the hangar door repairs at 1815 Airport Loop, and, two, movement of more than 5% of board budget. Mary Roar.
Good morning.
Mary, you can check your...
Oh, yes, sorry about that. Forget about it. Uh, I guess I was here, uh, uh, last week and since that time, both, uh, Tom Moser and I met, as well as Jonathan and I met, and we've also had discussions with the city attorney who had discussions with Heather. So, I think, um, my understanding is that we need to continue to work on some of our interlocal agreement documents in the future. We're working on updating that to make some of these paragraphs clearer, but I'm here to answer any questions that the commissioners may have...
Since I requested to defer this from the last meeting, um, Mary's right, I met with Mary, Jonathan and I both met with Mary, and I wanted to understand, where I was coming from is most hangars, box hangars have a single door, this one has two doors. So my question was, before I went out to meet with Mary, is why couldn't we just use one door in that hangar? And the answer is very simple, took no, a few minutes to understand it. This, this building, this hangar, is literally two hangars in one building, okay? So there's a divider in the building, there's, there're customers and renters on both sides. I think the revenue off this building is $90,000 per year, if I believe Mary quoted. So it literally does need two separate doors in the north side and the south side of the hangar. So, uh, with that, I was convinced, we need two sets of doors. Jonathan's working with the insurance from TAC on what the amount that the insurance will pay. So the real request is to reallocate budget and I'm for that, the amount is what we, what we need to do it. And Mary's got multiple bids on these two sets of hangars, I believe, $280,000 for each set of doors, so $560,000 and the insurance is...
Still, we're, it's still up in the air, but it's 160 something, 174?
A 168 plus $50,000 if we rebuild it back again is the first appreciation thing.
And hopefully that, hopefully that can go up since she got bids for, multiple bids for these doors, so maybe we'll get more insurance on there. So, with that, uh, I would move to follow the request of Mary Roar to reallocate, uh, existing budgets for the amount necessary to, uh, replace the, uh, two hangar doors, uh, subtracting off what we get for insurance and it's all within the budget.
Now, I thought this had to do with considering it an emergency.
Well, that's, that's interlocal agreement.
Let me second that, I can probably answer that one.
Yeah, yeah.
There's, there's two emergency issues. One was the interlocal agreement refers to an emergency that they can't move the money, they can't access this reserve money under the interlocal without doing what they've done, which is the chairman of the board of the president and Mark Moser sending the letter. That language, uh, well, I'm not gonna go into why it was in there originally, it probably needs, that needs to be removed in the new interlocal that they're working on right now. Um, and that doesn't track exactly with us preparing emergencies. It's a different thing to two emergencies. Um, I believe that the county attorney, the city attorney have talked about it and because of the nature of the, the damage was in July, but it actually is an emergency, it does qualify because of the timing of the damage and the insurance quotes and the thing that it was unknown at the time, uh, the budget was done, exactly what the cost was gonna be. So it does qualify, in fact, as emergency. So, is that correct?
Yeah, it's correct.
The interlocal agreement, did it contain a definition of what they considered an emergency? Is that what you're...
No, not really.
It's really like emergency expenditure is what it was called and the term was called an emergency expenditure, so, yeah, it doesn't...
Well, there, there was no definition.
No.
So, it's ambiguous if, if you have, one guy says this is emergency expenditure and the other one says it's not. So you're trying to get everybody on the same page, you know, the words and it has to be...
Right. It was, that language was put in there when the board was first set up and I don't wanna go into the details as to why I think it was put in there, 'cause that's...
Yeah.
Personal opinion and doesn't make any difference. Um, but it doesn't, it needs to come out, in my opinion, and both, and, you know...
And that's a different subject.
That's a different topic.
Well, we, well, we talked about that some more.
Now, on the insurance issue, uh, we're still working with TAC trying to figure out exactly if they will go to the $280,000 estimate that we have, which I think they should, minus possibly all the, you know, depreciation, bank care. Um, so the, you know...
Which is the county's half.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it's the county's, it's our insurance, we cover the insurance for the whole thing. So, worst case, it'd be about $400,000 and they have about $700,000 reserve for the fund that they're taking the money from. Um, hopefully, um, it'll be about $80,000, $90,000, less than that, maybe $20,000 or somewhere in there, but we're waiting on that insurance, that determination.
So it's, it's, it's not city and county's responsibility for both, but it's in the budget, like Jonathan says, so it's...
So it's the county's portion, not the county's half in this.
It doesn't, doesn't matter.
It's a different vote.
It doesn't matter.
It's 50/50.
We both, we both own the doors, city and county, both own the doors.
Right.
So, how we, how we pay for those doors is out of the budget. For it to be approved, we have to approve the airport board to move more than 5% within their budget. That's it. City councils already approved this, so it's now to the county to approve it and that was the reason for the motion to...
It comes, it's coming out of the airport's reserve, not the city's, in fact.
Yeah, I get it, no, okay.
But Mary, do I understand correctly that, uh, you need our approval for your airport board to declare this, uh, emergency expenditure and you need our approval because you're moving more than 5% of your budget?
Um, I'm gonna, uh, I, honestly, I looked at this, I think all we needed to do was notify you that we had this emergency expenditure and then we're asking for the monies to be take, to be moved. So, yeah, I'm gonna defer to Heather because she's probably looked at this as much as I have, but, I mean, it just, the actual section out of the board says that we just need to notify y'all.
So all you need from us is approval to do this.
Yeah, yeah.
And that was the motion.
That's your motion.
I'm sorry.
Okay, motion's been made by Commissioner Moser, seconded by Commissioner Latson to approve the expenditure for the new doors for the, uh, hangar, hangar repairs at 1815 Airport Loop.
Out of the existing budget.
Out of the existing budget.
Okay.
Any discussion? Those are the regular...
Just so that any, everybody watching and listening at home knows that that's why there's not a 50/50 because this is a budget item. So, it, it's not the same as most of what we do with the, uh, with the airport, I'll make sure, because people may hear this and not know why, and that's why.
Okay. Okay, those are favorities, hand. Five, five zero unanimous, thank you, Mary.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary.
Thanks for coming back.
Item 1.3, consider discuss and take appropriate action to approve an unbudgeted purchase of a storage circuit for the sheriff's department.
1.2. Yeah. Tyler Technologies, who is our major software vendor, has told us that one of their products that we currently use will not be NIGERS compliant one day and the next day it's maybe compliant and this is not tenable. In order to progress forward, we need to purchase some equipment that was not planned for, this came out of the blue because of their changes. And we absolutely have, have to do this in order to be compliant with the reporting for the Feds.
So what's the amount like and where'd it come from?
The, in order to be compliant with the federal...
Let me see, yeah, it's... So what's the amount and where'd it come from?
All right. First off, to explain it a little bit, I'm not very happy with Tyler Technology, but y'all remember I came to y'all last month about us having to go to a different law enforcement reporting system? Because our current one is Odyssey, which is Tyler Technology, will do UCR reports, but it will not do the new federal reporting.
What's the new UCR?
UCR, Uniform Crime Reporting.
Okay.
Okay? NIGERS is a UCR, but it's expanded. Not only, UCR only kept track of the seven major crimes, okay? NIGERS now has to keep track of everything, which is even like a family violence assault. Now it will keep track of that and it has to keep track of what's the relationship between the victim and the suspect.
And what's NIGERS?
It's the National, I had it the other day, it's a bunch of nice long words for statistical reporting is all it amounts to, that they've explained. It's taking the place of the UCR. So, if you're not NIGERS compliant, your agency, that may be a county, is no longer eligible for JAG grants, Justice Assistance Grants. Right now, Kirke County Sheriff's Office, we don't have any Justice Assistance Grants, but that's not to say the next administration might not want some because it does, those grants help with Bulletproof Fest, always come from a different one, but they also help with, uh, drug courts, they help with, with more officers, they help with probation departments, they help with drug treatment, I mean, detention stuff, everything. So it's a big grant block of type grants.
But we don't, we don't have that, now.
I don't now, I used to in the past, but I don't right now, but it would again, make us ineligible. So I do think we need to be NIGERS compliant, we need to report the stats as they want. Now, the problem we have with it is Odyssey can't do it and they're owned by Tyler Technology. Tyler Technology has another RMS system that does do it, but the two right now don't talk to each other very well, okay? They're both by the same company, they're giving us the, the system for free because they're just taking the amount that we took, we're currently paying for our law enforcement part and applying it to the, to the new one, all right? And so it's not costing us anything there. But the problem you have is they have to convert the data that's in Odyssey right now to fit in NIGERS, okay? Or fit in the new law enforcement system. The new system is exactly the same system Kirke PD uses, so it's not like it's not trying to prove it, it's a decent system. But, the, the problem Bruce has is the storage, the server space that Kirke County has is getting close to maxing out, period. Regardless of this new system or anything else, we're running out of storage space. You know, you figure, when I had videos, every car has videos, every person had video, cars had three videos, okay? There's all kinds of data, crime scene photographs, everything that had to go in there and would have maxed out.
It was not operating, it's even slower and it's, that stuff retained.
It's stacking up worse. So it's just getting worse and worse. So I told Bruce, if we have to do this, what's it gonna cost to get Kirke County servers up and going correctly? And it's not just the sheriff's office, it's, it's for all of us, okay? To have the space. And there's two different parts to it. One is $12,532 and the other one is $4,793. So when you add the two together, you're talking about 18, somewhere around 18,000.
Seventeen.
I got to looking at my stuff and I just talked to the auditor and she can come in here and verify some of this if we would. Since it is both, thank you. It's the National Incident-Based Reporting System, judging, our HR person looking up, oh, that was here, thank you. I have enough money in my seizure... I have enough money in my seizure account and in our equipment to donate funds that I don't have, and it wouldn't hurt the next, the incoming administration, it'd still leave plenty in there. I don't have any problem paying the 5,000, I mean, the $12,532. And if the county, since it is a county-wide system, would pay the $4,793 out of contingency. And I think we'd get this done and take care of the county's storage for years to come.
Is it, is it possible for the storage to be in the cloud as opposed to on the server?
The answer to your question is yes, but cloud storage in and of itself, you pay to have it stored, and you pay a transaction for every time you touch it.
So how's it relate, how does it compare?
It's much more expensive in the cloud.
It's like the difference in having a rental place where you put your stuff or having it in your barn. We can have it in our barn, safe and secure, but we can pay a storage.
I'm just looking for a dollar comparison.
Yeah. Well, the other, your prior IT manager, even though him and I didn't see eye to eye on a lot of things, he refused to do things with the cloud because he said it was too vulnerable to having issues in other counties.
Well, that's, that's what I thought the answer was going to be, but sound like the best.
It costs also.
Look, I understand it's cost, there's cost A and cost B. So how does cost A and cost B compare?
I don't have you at apples to apples right this minute.
How can you make a decision if you don't know?
Because historically, it's been that way. We go in, we'll look at the cloud-based storage from multiple sources, and that's what we come back with.
So there are 254 counties in the, in the state. So do all other counties have the same problem? Since it's, they would be.
I want to answer the question. I, I don't know the answer to that explicitly, but I will say that the counties that are our size and larger have their own specific one.
No, I'm just talking about, all of a sudden, with the new reporting the sheriff just explained, it sounded like it's probably a common problem with all counties.
Not all counties were using Odyssey.
That's true.
They had other systems that were easy to convert over and not stay NIGERS compliant. Okay? The only one that's on Odyssey that I know of right now, and they've been working for a year trying to get it NIGERS compliant, and they still haven't, they think they're getting closer, is Coe Mount County.
Okay.
But it's, it's, it would take us, it's unfortunately, one of the biggest problems with Odyssey and with the county system, when we went back to it back in the late eighties, is there was never adequate training for employee use. All right? You know, the IT part was fine, but it's kind of one of those things, garbage in, garbage out. And if the clerk's office entered a person that had any brown eyes by BRN, and the sheriff's office used BRO, now you've got it messed up. Okay? And there's so many of these, I pulled up a name this morning in, in Odyssey, and there was actually, he was in there at least 15 times, separate times. Years ago, what I was told in that is from district clerk's office, when they get things from attorneys on lawsuits and that, they don't have to give identifiers on the people. They can just give the name. Okay? And that's good enough for the lawsuit. Well, it's not good enough for our Odyssey system, because other things can, can transform in there. So you need to know the name, a date of birth, and a driver's license number. Everybody's required three different things. And since they didn't have it, they just entered a new person every time.
But Judge, that's just Odyssey, you need, so we're talking about storage, well, capacity now.
But that's, that's part of the conversion, why Coe Mount County's had so much. If we're just staying with storage, we need the storage, period. Okay? I don't, there's no doubt in my mind about it.
All right. So bottom line is to the county out of contingency is ballpark 5,000, 12,000 out of, out of?
My equipment and seizure fund.
Seizure funds.
Twelve, five.
Okay.
I make for approval.
A second. Motion's been made by Commissioner Baloo, seconded by Commissioner Lass to approve purchase of a restored server for the sheriff's department. Any discussion?
Or, or not to exceed $5,000 out of county contingency.
All right.
You all agree?
If you're in favor, raise your hand. unanimous, five zero.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Item 1.4, consider discussing take appropriate action to set bond amounts for the count of the constables. And that's something that we need to do. I'm not sure what the bond amounts currently are, Gotti's not here, but I think the statute says they have to be between $500 and $1,500 each.
If I may, Judge, the bonds I have listed are 1,500.
1,500?
I make a motion we set the bond amount 1,500 for the constables. Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Lass, seconded by Commissioner Baloo to set bond amounts for constables at $1,500. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. unanimous, five zero. Item 1.5, consider discussing take appropriate action to determine how to proceed with attending professional legal services for the 2021 redistricting. This year, we have received a number of solicitations from the three major firms, the Bickerstaff firm, the Brandon firm, and the Allison Bass firm. They're the three major players in redistricting. Legislative session starts in a month, and we need to get somebody on board, start working with us to be prepared for redistricting.
I've talked to Chuck Kimbrough a couple of times related to subdivision things, and he's said each time, he's glad to come down and, and talk to the court about that.
And every time I talk to Sergio, he tells me the same thing. Every time I talk to Jim Allison, he, he tells me the same thing. They're all three standing ready, they're just trying to get signed up to meet the pain.
Cost about the same, no matter who, or?
Yeah, it's, it's a comparable cost.
It's a, I mean, there's written into the two, it's kind of, they're open-ended, the way they're set up. First, they see if we need to redistrict, which I'm pretty confident we will. And one, we have to, partially because we have some errors that we, we have some neighborhoods and things of that that are splitting correctly. I've heard over the years, I don't know, in my precincts, I think you have some and you have some.
You and I.
Yeah. And that requires redistricting. So I think we're going to go with the quick, the quick overview. I guess they need to do it either way, but it's going to be a larger amount. And I guess, how does this not require an RFP? Because it's professional services?
Oh, right.
Well.
You could have each of them just come down and make a presentation to you, if it's the three who have contacted y'all.
Well, I'm just bringing it to the court's attention that the process is starting.
Right.
And we have a big firm to represent, and they're going to need to.
And we have to do this.
At some point.
We have to do this at some point, so we have to know the cost of each, even if they're comparable.
Right. I think that we could do, we could probably, we have used Bickerstaff each the last two times. I don't think we have used again, but the auditor should be able to come in with that total cost was last time, which would give us a pretty good idea, and you can apply it by a factor, you know, what. But that should give us a, at least a, a low estimate.
Now, you just said we've had the same people do it three times?
Twice.
Twice?
Two thousand.
And there's problems with the last one?
Um, the, the process, if there's problems, it's, it was not caught by the court. It, there's a lot of, to avoid the problems, it's up to the commissioners, because they don't know. I mean, they're looking at numbers and population.
Right, we know the neighborhoods.
Yeah. You know the neighborhoods. And the, and it's not, I mean, the basic rules are, one, we have to live in our precincts. That's, so you have to figure out that. My precinct gets drawn first, because I have the minority precinct under, under election rules. And then after that, they try to balance it out. And then there's some big discussions that we've had in the past. In the past two times, the decision was made to come out from Kerrville kind of as a star so that we all had a piece of Kerrville. Other areas, you know, try to maybe carve Kerrville into two spots and the rest of the county into two spots. I mean, there's different ways to look at it, and we've always chosen to kind of have all of us have a part of the city of Kerrville.
Having not been through it myself, and, well, I know Marley hadn't either, if they're willing to come in and give a presentation, I'd like to hear it.
Yeah, me too.
The other, yeah, I'm all for that.
You want all three of them to come?
Yeah.
If we're going to.
Why not?
Yeah.
We'll extend invitations.
The other big thing is that makes it difficult, you have to use a physical boundary for the boundaries. I mean, you have to be identified, so you have to use a road, basically a road, a river or a stream, or you can use something like a power line.
Yeah.
Those are the things that you can use.
Sure.
And between, between two and three.
Two and three, there's a power line.
There's a power line. But it's, there's always areas that are really difficult, because there's no, if you use a road, you're splitting half the people on one side and one on the other.
Exactly.
So anyway.
You have to use something.
So I would set up as early in January as possible, Judge.
Yeah. We'll extend invitations.
The idea that each precinct has a part of Kerrville proper is smart, I think. That was the way to go and with, the way we should stay.
It's extremely cumbersome.
It's cumbersome, but it's, it's smart to do it that way.
No, I want part of Ingram too.
Well, we'll have to annex.
Forget that. Well, you can't discriminate between cities.
Well, that's the hub, the financial hub of this county is Kerrville, and the needs inside of the city are different. And as the guy who has the most of it in this precinct, I can tell you, it's, it's a much different animal dealing with folks in the city as in the county. And they have different needs, and all of us should be in touch with that.
Right.
You what?
You don't have most of Kerrville. I'll probably look the most.
Look at the map. Look where it runs. His is mostly Kerrville, mostly Kerrville, yeah, it's just a strip. Yeah. You ever look at that map in the hall?
I know that we're, I know that we're sitting in my precinct right now.
Yeah, courthouse is divided. Yeah, courthouse.
I've looked at that map, about two-thirds of this county's in his precinct.
Yeah, his. Most of the goats do.
Yeah.
A whole bunch of them.
But equal amount of citizens.
You're right.
Okay?
Okay.
We'll extend the invitations, try to get it on the agenda in early January. Item 1.6, consider discussing take appropriate action to address possibility of prohibiting the sale or use of restricted fireworks, i.e. skyrockets with sticks and missiles with fins, any portion of the unincorporated area of Kerr County pursuant to local government code. I put it on the agenda, but it's your baby.
It's my baby? Well, Commissioner Lass and I were looking at the latest reports this morning, and after looking at them, we, we're going to have to ban missiles.
You don't have to look at a report, you can look at your pasture.
Yeah, exactly. But we did that before we got called on, because it wasn't in, on the guidelines, but it is now. And so I move that we, this upcoming fireworks season, Christmas and New Year's, that we ban missiles with fins and rockets with sticks or vice versa, or whatever, whichever.
It's done.
Both, okay.
So the motion's been made by Commissioner Harris, seconded by Commissioner Moser to prohibit the use of certain fireworks that include skyrockets with sticks and missiles with fins. Is there any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. unanimous, five zero. And folks, we don't have a choice on that this year.
Right, no.
Item 1.7, information regarding transition process for the new Justice of the Peace Precinct Three clerk. New hires begin on December the 28th of this year. And Judge Mitchell and I talked about this. She came to me wanting to know if she needed Commissioner's Court approval to, for the new person that she's bringing in to be her replacement clerk, for her clerk to stay over for the four days that last weekend of the year and be retrained, to retrain the new person. And I told her I didn't think she needed it, but out of, you know, belts and suspenders, we put it on the agenda for everybody to know. It doesn't affect her budget. So if you think we need to take action, we're ready to do that.
I move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Lass, seconded by Commissioner Harris to approve the transition for the clerk in Precinct Three. Any discussion?
Is she using, where's the, are the funds coming from? Is it because of a different, difference in salary between the old and the new?
Cheryl is, is going to be substantially more than.
Okay.
Was substantially more than the new person.
So it'll still come out of the same salary line, though?
Yeah. I think that's just smart. I mean, let's go.
Okay. Those in favor, raise your hand. Five zero. Good. Item 1.8, consider discussing take appropriate action to accept the real estate contract for the property located at 199 Spur 100 here in Kerrville and authorize the county treasurer to disperse the funds. Ms. Houston, at the back of room, member of our capital improvement planning committee. After we talked, discussed this at the last meeting, we presented another counter offer to the sellers for the same amount as the appraisal, as instructed by this court, and they accepted. And so, and the CIP met with Charlie Hastings and Bobby Gore and Kelly Hofer, and walked the site this past week. And even though the property is technically going to be in the floodplain, it's all developed for, we're going to use it.
This is the 16 acres, not the five acres.
15.93 acres. And if you do the math, the price per acre that we got is a fraction of what we were asked to pay for the five acres of the road. So we feel like we came up with a very good purchase.
And what, what's the per acre price? It was 27, it was 27 the other day when we talked. Well, maybe I'm talking about something in the executive session I shouldn't be talking about.
Well, it's the price and the location all.
It's about 21, 21 and a half thousand dollars an acre, multiply it compared to the 54 acre that we're looking at.
Right, okay.
I think that the key point that I want to make is really for the public as much as for the court, is that we're fully aware that most of this property is in the floodplain. And, but we have, for the needs that we have for, which is road and bridge storage, animal services, new facility, it is, it meets the needs that we have, which is also one of the reasons that we got the price we get, is because it is a floodplain and other people that have looked at it have not been able to figure out how to use the property.
For the last decade, they have been.
Yeah, for the decade it's been on the market. So I just want to make sure that, you know, when the public looks at maps or hears something that we bought property in floodplain, we're fully aware of it, and it's the reason we're able to get a good price, and it meets the needs and the location exactly where we need it.
And so the, Judge, the, the price is?
350,000.
350,000? And the funding for that, I think it's good to let the public know that.
I mean, tax anticipation notes that we've already approved, and that we're working with our financial advisors at the deputy's fee.
I'd move for approval for purchase of the property, almost 16 acres at 199 Spur 100 in Precinct Two.
Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Moser, seconded by Commissioner Harris to approve the sale.
And disperse the money, have the treasurer.
And disperse.
And disperse the funds for the purchase thereof.
But the motion's been made by Commissioner Moser, seconded by Commissioner Harris. Discussion?
You want to say anything?
Um.
Come on in. Did you have to ask?
Well, since you asked. Now, this is, this has been an ideal property that we've been looking at for a long time, and to see it finally come to fruition is, is a step in the right direction for the county, and I would humbly request that you approve.[1703.08]
You just humbly agree, you humbly agree with this?
I humbly agree with you.
Well, on behalf of the CIP, building up what Rem is saying, when we first got wind that this property was available and went and looked at it the first time, it was first on our list. And has been first on our list for the last, what, year and a half we've worked on this?
Year and a half, yes, sir.
And it has eluded us. And we're very grateful that we are cooperating with the seller and being able to make this happen for the county. This is, this is a win-win. And so.
It truly is.
And for the people that don't know where it is, and by the way, Road and Bridge, our Road and Bridge offices technically are in the floodplain now. They weren't when they were built, but they are now because they changed the map. And when we talk about being able to use this in the floodplain, there's a lot of materials and aggregate storage that they have out at Road and Bridge that we can use in those low areas. And as far as the buildability, as long as we build the, the structures, the improvements up out of the floodplain, we can, we can develop that. So it's been a real.
Yeah, it's an ideal piece of property for Road and Bridge with their storage needs and, you know, right now they've got all their equipment scattered all over the county. They can centrally locate a lot of that and, and then there's a place for an animal shelter.
So with that, then the next step would be to have some layout of how, how the 16 acres would be used in the future.
That's me, Peter Lewis is working on that.
Right, okay, good.
And when we, we walked the property, all, the entire committee walked the property. We got kind of bird up, if you know what, walking into those weeds out there. But we walked pretty much the entire property and we have a general feel for where things would go and how we're going to try to. The big, the big issue for us was ingress and egress. We're probably gonna change how we get into Road and Bridge, moving back a little bit to the east. And, and they want to be able to have an exit that comes out on Spur 100 so their heavy equipment doesn't have to fight the traffic in the morning to get out on 27.
Good.
So there's a preliminary plan in place and Peter Lewis should have something to us for.
One thing that Commissioner Letts pointed out, he said, animal shelter and, and road and bridges, but my understanding, maintenance as well.
In the future possibility.
Possibility in the future. And so you just tie the two pieces of property together. We, county owns a bigger piece of property in one location that's gonna help everybody.
The cemetery's on one side and the VA hospital on the other side. And we have that sliver that goes between that and can put it to good use.
Sure did.
Right. So, those in favor, raise your hand. And those opposed, no.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
The agenda says let's take a break, let's take, we'll be in recess for five minutes.
Just for y'all's reference. One area for the clerk. So, thank y'all for having me. I'm Marshall Heath, area engineer of Kerr County, Mandera County, Kendall County, and Uvalde County, interim area engineer for six other counties out west. I'm here today just to kind of get a conversation started between the county and the state regarding mailbox placements off of our right-of-way and onto potentially county-maintained property. What's generated this is, you know, 30 years ago, you had a subdivision. Three people lived in it. And so they bring us a mailbox, we'd say, sure, we'll put it up. And over time, more and more people buy into this property. And so it's created these locations where we have 30 or 40 mailboxes. Typically, two by our policy are allowed to be there. But, you know, we just kind of looked the other way over the last, like, say, 30 years. We just, you know, it was convenient. We wanted to be nice to the people. Well, now it's become kind of a maintenance issue because these pads are getting so large, not only for our guys to do any work there, but for the carriers as well. You know, we're trying to look out for them. So what we're proposing is to move these locations on, off of our right-of-way, you know, adjacent to it, but on county-maintained property. We would go in and build a pad. We would move the multi-mount boxes over to that location, probably build this pad, you know, to accommodate maybe two or three more. We were outside earlier talking about some areas probably need more, some less. Depends on how the development's going. The other thing that I would like to ask for y'all's assistance in is when we're looking at Platts, I try to be real wary of what that development looks like. And if it looks like it's going to be, you know, a multi-residential area, you know, I'm having the developer, the surveyor, engineer, whatever, put in our text doc notes that, you know, we will not allow postal service on the right-of-way. So we want them to put in those multi-box clusters, you know, where it's convenient for them, it's convenient for us. Anybody have any questions?
So this is, Marshall, this is for multi-box clusters? Is that what this for?
Yes.
Period.
An example being in the last two or three weeks, at Fallow Run, people are obviously behind the property out there, and they want to get mail. So they come, call us, say, hey, I'd like to put a mailbox out here. So we ask them, where do you live? You know, where's your residence? Well, it's five miles down the road. Well, according to our policy, you know, you're not often allowed to have a mailbox on our right-of-way. And so they say, what do I do? And we say, well, you go to the post office. So they go to the post office, and there's no more post office boxes available. So, you know, they're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place, and, you know, we've kind of been the good guy, trying to be, saying, well, we'll just go ahead and put one up. Well, if we do that over and over and over again, we end up with these, you know, massive turnouts where the postal carrier has to pull off, and he's there for 30 minutes just trying to fill all those boxes. And they're kind of in favor of it. We got to be real careful with that. I kind of put that in the notes. I don't know if y'all have got a copy of that. You know, if we do move forward with this, we want to go according to a carrier's route. We don't want to just, you know, bounce around all over the county, do one here, do one there, because that misses with the carrier's contracts. So if we move forward with this, we kind of want to pick a route so that it'll coincide with a renegotiation of that contract with the US Postal Service, so that the carrier is fully aware that, you know, this is what's coming. Here's going to be the new route.
So this request is for three specific locations?
I believe there might have been four in there.
Four. Four, okay.
And we just want to start there. You know, and visiting with Charlie, you know, we're not just going to drive out there, you know, tomorrow, if you guys think this is a great idea, then just go do it. You know, we feel like we need to let the postal service, you know, be aware of what we're doing. They know what we're doing, we just need to let them know when. And then the same thing with the stakeholders. You know, we feel like we need to, you know, give them, let them know what we're doing and why we're doing it, as opposed to them just driving down one day, and their mailbox isn't there, it's over here.
So is there an issue with the county in using the right-of-ways for this?
Yes, sir, there is. And I think there are issues that we can work through, they just need to be thought out really well. Some of these roads have 50-foot of right-of-way, some of them have 60. And then, as you well know, we do have other roads in the county that maybe there's only 30 feet of right-of-way. And something that narrow, this wouldn't work very well at all. And hopefully, those, something that narrow already has mailboxes at every property, not all in one gang. But picture yourself, you want to go check the mail, and you go down to the mailbox, you check it, you turn around and go right back home. Other people, maybe they check it on their way to work or on their way in, but maybe it's the weekend. So you really have to accommodate all of those scenarios. And the one that really is going to trump all the others is the person who is driving down to check their mail, and they turn around and go back home. How do you turn around?
Charles, can I interrupt?
Yes, sir.
Those are general con... What I'm asking is specifically for these four, okay? That's what the agenda item is for using the camera on these four particular locations?
Yes.
So do we know what that is?
Yes, we asked, can you give us a standard of what this would look like? They did. It would be a pad around the mailbox, but it didn't, it wouldn't accommodate the person that would need to turn around at the mailboxes. We drove to them. We tried turning around in the street, and you had to get way off into the ditch on the other side of the road in order to make it. And then a larger truck like mine, an F-150, doesn't have the greatest turning radius, and if there were mailboxes, it would hit them. So we think that there's things that can be done. We think there's a little turnout that could be constructed. We also believe that there really needs to be a process to this. One would be if there's a homeowners association associated with that subdivision, that there'd be a meeting with the, you would definitely want commissioner there, you'd want road and bridge, you want county engineer, text doc, reps from the HOA, maybe their president or someone like that, as long, as well as somebody from the mail carrier.
What I'm pushing for is, can we take any action today?
I think the action would be to work with the engineering department and the road and bridge department.
We don't need action to do that.
Yeah, I wouldn't take action just yet. We think that we need to develop a process. I think part of the process would be a public hearing.
Conceptually, what Marshall is saying, they'd like to be in the county right-of-way, but the details will depend on working with the county, determining exactly what's needed, and then grant that on a case-by-case basis.
Yes, sir.
Okay? So no actions needed today.
So the issue is that there's an obstruction in these, I mean, in the right-of-way? Is that the issue?
No.
Because that was never really stated. So the problem is, is a mailbox in the right-of-way?
No.
Maintenance of the, that was never stated. What is the issue?
My bigger issue, not even in Kerr County, it's kind of all in the whole area. The worst scenario is where Pipe Creek is, similar to the State Highway 39. We've got five feet from our edge of pavement to the fence. And so you have these mailbox carriers and patrons trying to access their mailbox while half their car is on the road.
Safety.
It's a safety issue.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear. I never heard any of that at the beginning. So we have a safety issue.
Yes.
And we need to move the mailboxes to a place that's safer.
Right.
And it's going to be one of these group mailboxes. Everybody has a key, one of those kind of mailboxes.
Well, that's where, that would be ideal, you know, in future developments, that's what I'm pushing for. Anytime a plaque comes through my office, and I see it's going to be a multi-residential subdivision, you know, I'm having the designer put that in the notes, you know, that one of those multi-boxes is going to be required. You know, we're not going to do mail service.
So, Marshall, this is a case-by-case thing, where you want to do this at a particular location for the safety clearance advantage for the post office, for the homeowners? So it's going to be a case-by-case in the county, and then we'd decide, say, yea, verily, you know, we can do that. But it's going to be based on the definition of what is being requested on each one? Well, safety is one thing, but...
That sounds like a new record.
It really is, because, you know, to take Charlie's comments a little further, so leave the mailboxes where they are now and take that same scenario of trying to go home. You know, we feel like it'd be safer for Charlie to make that U-turn on a county road as it would be on one of our highways, because it's, the people there getting their mail are having to do the same thing that he's talking about, they're just having to do it out on the highway.
But there's no specific request today for a location of what to do?
No, I'm with Charlie. I don't know that any action needs to be taken. We just need to get the conversation started with everybody. I wanted you guys to be aware of what we're thinking.
I think it's a really good thing to bring this up because, not to be made publicly, but there's subdivision, I'm just saying precinct two, that, you know, is probably going to be large enough, they're going to have to have cluster mailboxes. And so it's good, and I haven't seen anything in a concept that says this is where we can put that. So I think it's, that's a really good point you bring up today, is, you know, identify where that can be, and so it's safe, and it's not interfering with text doc operations and with county right-of-way, so.
We need to have the post office in on this conversation.
Right.
Because the post office does require clusters in certain situations.
Right.
And they kind of trump, I mean, that's almost step A, is that if they're going to require it, well, they're going to require a period of... It doesn't matter as to where it goes.
Right.
And they're not there to negotiate.
And they're like everybody else. They tell me, you know, they can't afford for me to say, you know, I want you to take these 40 boxes and put them in that subdivision. And the post office will say, well, we can't afford, you know, to put these cluster boxes everywhere. So I'm putting, I'm trying to put those on the development run. You know, he's the guy making the money, so he can afford to pay for, you know, one of these cluster boxes initially and just...
Good point. Very timely.
So in this case, you have four neighborhoods mentioned that need to have, we need to have a public meeting, and the post office needs to be a part of the text doc in the county.
Right. The best example is Fallow Run. We've been getting multiple calls, like I say. You know, and there's some individuals out there that can't get their mail right now because there's nowhere to get it. You know, we're saying, you're not going to, we're not going to put a mailbox up for it, and the post office is saying, we don't have any boxes. So they're kind of stuck in no man's land. And that's kind of where, why we've kind of picked these. These are kind of the bigger safety issue, you know, remote areas. And we've already discussed it with carriers. Carriers on those two routes are in favor of this. They like the idea of getting off the road, to be able to get out and put the mail where it needs to go.
Well, just to clarify, on these four locations, and I'm looking at the attachments here, the photographs, on each of those, the mailboxes would be moved back farther on the county's right-of-way. Is that right?
I would work with Charlie and you guys. You tell me where you'd want them. I just, I mark those up just to generically show, you know, hey, move them from here to there.
But the real thrust of your invention here is, in the future, this is something that you want to place the burden on the developer as they develop these tracks.
Yes.
And that becomes part of the process.
Yes.
And as far as the people that already have mailboxes, well, like, for example, I live on 39, and you know what that is.
Right.
There's no way to get off 39 to get your mailbox.
Right.
I walk to a mailbox.
Right.
But this is something, it's not going to be taken on anybody's individual property rights. This is going to be done on either state or county right-of-ways.
Yes. Yes, sir.
So don't want anybody to panic out there.
Right.
Was there something that kicked this off, that somebody got hurt, or you just, this is something that you wanted to get done?
Well, the text op policy is, let's say we have an unauthorized mailbox. So we're not allowed just to go out there and remove it. So typically what happens, somebody will move in, they don't know the rules, they just say, I do mail. So they'll go to Home Depot, buy a five-gallon bucket and a bag of sack cream and a four-by-four. And they will fill that bucket set that post, put their mailbox on it, and carry that out there and set it in our right-of-way. Well, over at Pipe Creek, it's literally five feet from the edge of pavement to the fence. So our policy is, when the unauthorized mailbox is there, we move it to the right-of-way. And we put a note in there to say, you know, you need to contact our office, and let's do this right. Well, when you move that mailbox three feet away from where it was, the carrier just reaches a little further over there and puts some mail in there, so it just stays there. Landowner never contacts us. And that's a hazard, you know, that mailbox, somebody would hit that, it could be bad news. And so we don't want that mailbox in that five-gallon bucket full of concrete in our right-of-way. And that's kind of what got all this started, you know, the supervisor down there in Mandera was showing me, it's just, you know, runs of them. And he said, I can't do anything about this. And so I just started the process, reached out to the postal service of San Antonio, and then just all over my area saying, what can we do? Plus, you know, the development is coming this way, you know, I'm dealing with a lot of it in Kendall County. So the planning process over there, I'm doing the same thing. As soon as one comes across my desk that has, you know, I can tell it's fixing to be big, 500 homes, a lot of them want 500 mailboxes out in our right-of-way. So I'm having them put that note in there that, you know, mail service will be provided as a cluster inside the subdivision, not on our right-of-way.
Very good.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, unless you have any questions for me.
No. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks for all you do for us.
You bet, you bet.
Item 1.10, consider to discuss and take appropriate action for the court to set a public hearing for 10:00 AM on January 25, 2021, for revision of Platte for Kerr Vista Ranch, Section 4, Lots 15, 16, 17, Block B. That's precinct two, Charlie, do you want to?
This proposal revises lots 15, 16, and 17 into Lot 15R and Lot 16R. One of them will be a little over 10 acres, and the other one over 19 acres. Access is from Luis Lane. The county engineer requests the court to set up a public hearing for 10:00 AM on January 25, 2021, for revision of Platte for Kerr Vista Ranch, Section 4, Lots 15, 16, 17, Block B, Lane 5, Page 237, Precinct 4.
So this is just set up a public hearing?
Yes, sir.
I move for approval.
Second.
A motion been made by Commissioner Harris, seconded by Commissioner Baloo, to set a hearing for January 25, 10:00 AM next year, 2021, for revision of Platte for Kerr Vista Ranch, Section 4, Lots 15, 16, and 17. Any other discussion? If those in favor, raise your hand. Get out of the side, you're right. Item 1.11, consider to discuss and take appropriate action for the court to set a public hearing for 10:00 AM on January 25, 2021, for revision of Platte for Riverbend Estates, Lots 8 and 9. Charlie, do you want to?
Thank you. This proposal combines Riverbend Estates, Lots 8 and 9, into Lot 8R, this is 6.9 acres. Access is from Wharton Road. It is completely within the floodway and must meet requirements for development within the flood plain. It is within Kerrville's ETJ and would typically be platted through both the city and the county. Since the proposed lot is more than five acres, the owner's representative is going to request the city of Kerrville waive their platting oversight to the county. We haven't heard back if that has happened yet. The existing right-of-way is labeled as 30 feet. Commissioner Moser had called you on that. That is a typo. We looked at the Platte, we measured, took some measurements using the GIS, and it's really 50 feet. And the former Platte lists it as 50 feet also, so we'll get that typo fixed. Now, our standard width is a 60-foot right-of-way, so now's the time to acquire any additional right-of-way if the court so desires, or if the court determines that 50 feet is wide enough for Wharton Road. I do have some maps, if you'd like to look and see what this looks like and the potential, I think, for the area to develop over time.
What's the speed limit on that road?
This speed limit, it changes. I think we've got an area that is 40, 40 to 45. We did a speed study earlier this year on that and changed the speed limit. Maybe that was about a year ago, actually. But it's around 40. And I think another section is 45, maybe on the Center Point River Road.
But just for clarification, today, we're just talking about setting a public hearing?
Setting a public hearing, but also need some, just the direction on whether or not to ask the, while they're plating this, for additional right-of-way. I'm going to go ahead and recommend that we not, since we've got 50 feet, I feel like that's plenty for, if we need to widen the road, we should have, if it was 30, I would be begging you to do something, but it's fishy.
Charlie and I talked about this, and we're talking about it in terms of 30. And if you replant it, it's kind of like the city is doing their sidewalk, okay? Anytime anybody makes a modification, they have to put in a little strip of sidewalk, even though it may be 50 feet, it doesn't connect with that. Same type of thing applies here. If we were required 60 feet, it'd just be for this one area. So do we do that, or do we wait till we have a reason to go full 60 feet? Okay? And it's 50 feet now, so it's not as big a deal. So I think we probably, my recommendation, even though no action, this is, action's only instead of public hearing. So I'm going to agree with the county engineer, move for recommending a public hearing on this issue on January the 25th at 10:00 AM, and with the guidance to Charlie that we not require, even though there's, let's keep being action, or even a proposal right now, a motion on the thing, it's just guidance to the county engineer.
Thank you.
Second.
To leave it at 50 feet.
But your motion is to set that public hearing?
Set the public hearing, that's the only motion.
Correct. Your second? Motion been made by Commissioner Moser, seconded by Commissioner Baloo, to set the public hearing for January 25, 2021, at 10:00 AM, for revision of Platte for Riverbend Estates, Lot 8 and 9. Any discussion? If those in favor, raise your hand. The answer is 5-0. 1.12, consider to discuss and take appropriate action for the court to set a public hearing for 10:00 AM on January 25, 2021, for revision of Platte for Spicer Ranch, Number 3, Track 151. Precinct 1. Charlie, do you want to?
This proposal subdivides Spicer Ranch, Number 3, Track 151, currently 11.58 acres, into two tracks. Track 151A will be 10.42 acres, and Track 151B will be 1.16 acres. Property access and road frontage to both lots will be on Harville Road. It is served by Aqua Texas, so our absolute minimum lot size is one acre. That smaller lot would be over one acre, 1.16. County engineer requests the court to set a public hearing for 10:00 AM on January 25, 2021, for revision of Platte for Spicer Ranch, Number 3, Track 151, Volume 3, Page 85, Precinct 1.
I'm not for approval. Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Baloo, seconded by Commissioner Harris, to set a public meeting for January 25, 2021, at 10:00 AM, for revision of Platte for Spicer Ranch, Route Number 3, Track 151. Any discussion?
The question, Charlie, why is the Platte with these two different drawings on it? I mean, it's unusual the way that...
They wanted to zoom in. They labeled one of them as it's kind of a zoom in of the, of this area at the front. Enlargement of the residence area. I think they did that probably for the review for environmental health. And so it can, that can be removed, it doesn't have to go on the Platte. But when they initially turned these in, there's additional information to satisfy environmental health. It's just a convenience. It will be removed.
Just curious.
Okay. Any other discussion? If those in favor, raise your hand. The answer is 5-0. 1.13, this is a public hearing for revision of Platte for Verdy Park Estates, Section 3, Lot 2. Is there anyone who would like to appear at this public meeting? Okay?
Do we need to holler out in the hallway?
It'd be a good idea, just to see if somebody's out there.
Is there anyone here for the public hearing? No. There's nobody.
Okay. That public meeting is adjourned. Let's move on to item 1.14. Consider to discuss and take appropriate action for the court to approve the certificate of completion of the Texas Department of Agriculture Colonia Economically Distressed Areas Program, Project Number 7217045, East Kerr County Center Point Waste Water Collection Project Phase 1, Contract Number 2, authorized county judge to execute said certificate. This is precincts 2 and 3.
Thank you. A construction contract was entered into on the first day of July 2017 between Kerr County and Passato Construction Company Incorporated for the construction of first-time sewer connections for low-to-moderate-income LMI residents to connect to Phase 1 of the East Kerr Center Point Waste Water Collection Project, funded by the Texas Water Development Board and Texas Department of Agriculture, TDA, through their Colonia Economically Distressed Areas Program, also known as CDAP, funding. The attached certificate of construction completion for the TDA/CDAP Project Number 7217045, funded portion of the Phase 1 LMI connections under Contract 2 with Passato Construction Company, certifies that all Phase 1 construction work has been completed and a final inspection of the project was conducted on the 31st day of August 2020. The county engineer and the county's engineering consultant, Tetra Tech Engineering, and they're here, recommend that the court approve the certificate of construction completion for Texas Department of Agriculture Colonia Economically Distressed Areas Program, Project Number 7217045, the East Kerr Center Point Waste Water Collection Project Phase 1, Contract 2, and authorize the county judge to execute said certificate, precincts 2 and 3.
Move for approval.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Moser, seconded by Commissioner Letts, to approve the certificate of completion.
I'd like to compliment Charlie and Don Berger, who's here for Tetra Tech. This was a huge project, lots of complications, lots of people to deal with, and especially the CDAP and LMI thing of connecting a lot of properties to the system, so job well done.
Thank you.
Question?
Excellent team behind all that.
This is only for the CDAP portion, there'll be a similar one with Water Development Board contract completion?
They will, the paperwork is different for the Water Development Board. You don't have a specific certificate to bring before the court for the Water Development Board funding, so this serves as both.
It serves as both.
Yes.
Any further discussion? If those in favor, raise your hand. 5-0. Item 1.15, consider to discuss and take appropriate action for the court to approve change order number 5 to East Kerr County Center Point Waste Water Project Phase 1 in the amount of $315,743.71. Charlie, do you want to?
Thank you. The attached change order number 5 that's in your packet is a reconciliation change order to adjust quantities of items to reflect the actual quantities of work completed now that the project is finished. Item number 145 is a correction to the amount of the item as an error was included in change order number 4, which was the last one you approved several weeks ago. The contractor erroneously left out his overhead in the pay request. Item number 140 addresses claims made by the contractor for additional work subject to delays that caused excessive mobilization and were not in the control of the contractor. The delay was caused by a lack of temporary construction easements. The temporary construction easements were secured by the owner and Grantworks, but were not all secured at exactly the same time, thus preventing the contractor from working on those properties without the easements. The extra work required to mobilize for these connections has been reviewed and found to be justified in the amount indicated for the work item. The costs incurred by the contractor have been verified by comparison to similar work items using CostWorks, that's a software application, by RS Means. RS Means is an independent construction cost estimating data resource company. County engineer and the engineering consultant of Tetra Tech Engineering recommend that the court approve change order number 5 to the East Kerr Center Point, East Kerr County Center Point Waste Water Project Phase 1 in the amount of $315,743.71, and authorize the county judge to execute said document, precincts 2 and 3.
Charlie, was that the temporary construction easement, was that in Center Point on the, on, I can't even remember the name of the street now.
Oh, it was multiple streets. They were the temporary construction easements that allow the plumber to go on to each individual property to connect the separate system. So they're scattered throughout Westwood and Center Point. They're in both locations.
And this is all within the budget of the project?
Yes, it is.
Move for approval.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Letts, seconded by Commissioner Moser, to approve change order number 5 to the East Kerr County Center Point Waste Water Project Phase 1. Any discussion?
I'll make a comment. You know, we were aware of this from the beginning, that this was happening. It wasn't, this isn't like a surprise. This was just pre-decided. Let's get through it and do it one time rather than do it piecemeal. get through it and do it one time rather than do it piecemeal.
Good point. Any other discussion? If you favor, raise your hand. 5-0. Item 1.16, consider discuss to take appropriate action for the court to tentatively award a contract for construction of the East Kerr County Center Point Waste Water Project, Phase 2, to D. Gara Construction LLC, in the amount of $10,565,954.99. Pending approval by the Texas Water Development Board and authorize the county judge to execute the contract when approved by the Texas Water Development Board. Charlie Hastings.
Bids were open and read aloud publicly at Kerr County Courthouse and the Commissioners' Court Chambers on November 24, 2020. The results of the bid opening were presented to and officially received by the Commissioners' Court at their meeting on November 30, 2020. The bids have been reviewed by the county engineer and the engineering consultant on the project, Tetra Tech. Tetra Tech's recommendation and tabulation of bids is attached heretofore for the Commissioners' review. The low bid for the project is from D. Gara Construction LLC for $10,565,954.99 for all work bid and financed by the Texas Water Development Board, Clean Water State revolving funds, and EDAP funds. The grant funds from the Texas Department of Agriculture are grant funds to connect low-to-moderate-income households to the project. After analyzing the bids, the cost will be used to fund a separate contract to be bid later. This contract will be used to connect low-to-moderate-income households to the project infrastructure. One of the reasons we're waiting also is we want to make sure we have all those temporary construction easements for those. Therefore, a tentative award is recommended for the East Kerr County Center Point Waste Water Project, Phase 2, to D. Gara Construction LLC, in the amount of the low bid of $10,565,954.99. See the engineer's recommendation of award and bid tabulation for additional information. Senior Patrick.
Question of county attorney. Tentatively awarding a contract? I'm not sure I understand. I understand what Charlie's saying, award the contract for the primary sewer system installation, but not the connection to individual properties, that's pending, making sure we get, identify all the low-to-moderate income, but the tentative award, can we do that, or do we have to award?
I think we're awarding subject to the Water Development Board approval.
Yes.
So it's just, so it's awarding subject to that?
Subject to the Water Development Board.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, it's not for the LMI?
Right.
Okay, so I'll move for approval.
Second. Motion been made by Commissioner Moser, seconded by Commissioner Letz to approve the award of the contract for construction of the East Kerr County Center Point Waste Water Project, Phase 2, to D. Gara Construction LLC, subject to the approval of the Texas Water Development Board. Any discussion?
Just a comment, there are some emails that came in either Friday or this morning, or maybe Friday, that from Water Development Board that they hope to have the contract maybe approved this week, or put a review of it this week, but they're working on it and they're trying to get, they understand that it's time sensitive to us and they're working on that currently.
Good news. All of you favor, raise your hand. 5-0. I think this is the last of your show this morning, Charlie.
Amen.
Item 1.17, consider discuss to take appropriate action for the court to tentatively award a contract for construction of the East Kerr County Center Point Waste Water Project, Phase 3, to D. Gara Construction LLC, in the amount of $7,313,775.2, pending approval by the Texas Water Development Board and authorize the county judge to execute the contract when approved by the Texas Water Development Board. Charlie Hastings.
Bids were open and read aloud publicly at the Kerr County Courthouse and the Commissioners' Court Chambers on November 24, 2020. The results of the bid opening were presented to and officially received by the Commissioners' Court at their meeting on November 30, 2020. The bids have been reviewed by the county engineer and the engineering consultant on the project, Tetra Tech. Tetra Tech's recommendation and tabulation of bids is attached heretofore for the Commissioners' review. The low bid for the project is from D. Gara Construction LLC for $7,313,775.2 for all work financed by the Texas Water Development Board, EDAP funds. County engineer and engineering consultant to the county, Tetra Tech, recommend that the court tentatively award a contract for construction of the East Kerr County Center Point Waste Water Project, Phase 3, to D. Gara Construction LLC, in the amount of $7, 313,775.2, pending approval by the Texas Water Development Board and authorize the county judge to execute the contract when approved by the Texas Water Development Board. And would also make a note that, similar to Phase 2, same thing for Phase 3, the TDA-funded low-to-moderate income, that's being bid separately, that will be a contract too. We'll be bidding that probably in February.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is made by Commissioner Moser, seconded by Commissioner Letz to approve the award of the contract for construction of the East Kerr County Center Point Waste Water Project, Phase 3, to D. Gara Construction LLC, as presented. Any other discussion?
Yeah, just as a verification, I probably should have made this in the last motion also, I think the intent of these, both of these motions is to give the county judge authority to sign all the contract and all related documents. There's a lot of documents that will have to be signed for this, as I recall from the previous ones, and not just the actual contract, the intent is to give authority for all those. And the other point is a comment I make, usually on these large projects, the bids come in higher than the engineer's estimates. On both of these, they came in lower, so good job on the bidding side of this.
Okay. Any other discussion? If you favor, raise your hand. 5-0. Thank you, Charlie. Thank you, Don.
Thank you, Don. Charlie?
Item 1.18, a public hearing regarding the installation of no parking signs on the far northwest portion of Ace Ranch Road East, Precinct 2. I call the public meeting to order. Is there anyone who would like to appear at this hearing? There being no one, then I adjourn the public meeting and we'll move on to item 1.19, which is consider discuss to take appropriate action for the Commissioners' Court final approval to install no parking signs on the far northwest portion of Ace Ranch Road East, Precinct 2. Ms. Hofer.
Ms. Sarah Mesa contacted the Raven Bridge office around October 5, 2020, regarding a parked enclosed utility trailer across from her driveway. This trailer has made it very difficult to get in and out of her driveway. They have also had to call EMS to come to their home, and this trailer has made it very difficult to navigate through their, to their address. The right-of-way easement is 20 feet, which is found on plat records, Volume 4, Pages 105 and 106, for Guadalupe Heights, Number 5, dated February 19, 1978. The pavement is 18 foot on this road, and so you've got a foot off the actual paved section on either side, it's very, very narrow. Front portion off of State Highway 27 is a 20-foot dedicated right-of-way up to Gary Crossway. From Gary Crossway to the back of Ace Ranch Road is a prescriptive easement that is also 20-foot wide, both having an 18-foot wide pavement. Since this back portion has no driveways or homes directly across the street, the front portion from Highway 27 to Gary Cross has houses on both sides that have driveways, back portion only has it on one side. Would be of great benefit to these folks to be able to put up no parking signs on that portion of the road. It is so tight back in there. Commissioner Moser has been involved on this. I spoke to one of the residents, other than Ms. Mesa, she said that would greatly help us. I said, I want to remind you, though, that no parking means no parking for you and your friends and your relatives in that section. But she was good with that. And so the county engineer has also looked at this, we drove out there, looked around, Charlie thought that would probably help with this issue. Commissioner Moser has been in the loop of all of this. So at this time, I asked the Commissioners' Court for their final approval regarding the installation of no parking signs on the far northwest portion of Ace Ranch Road East, Precinct 2, and it'd just be on that one side of the road.
I'm going to move for approval, but I want to comment too on what Kelly and Charlie have done on this. This is a real emergency safety issue, because vehicles, fire trucks, or ambulances or anything else cannot get down there. If people are parked on both sides of that road, one has driveways on it which people park on, the other side where Kelly's proposing put up stops, no parking signs, there are no driveways there. So this'll assure, or help ensure, access through emergency vehicles down a very narrow road without any turnaround at the end of it. So important thing to do, so that's my motion.
Second.
Okay. Now we have a second. Motion by Commissioner Moser, seconded by Commissioner Harris, to approve the no-stop signs on the northwest corner of Ace Ranch Road, as presented. Any discussion? If you favor, raise your hand. 5-0. 1.20, consider discuss to take appropriate action to open, read, and award the annual bids for road-based coal mix aggregate, emulsion oil, and corrugated metal pipe. Kelly Hofer.
After the bids have been opened and read, we would like to review immediately and return on this court date, December 14, 2020, and award the annual bids for road-based coal mix aggregate, emulsion oil, and corrugated metal pipe. All bid prices are to begin January 1, 2021, and be in effect until December 31 of 2021. At this time, we ask the court to open and read all material bids.
Okay.
I'll leave them up in attention.
Yep.
We've got a lot of them.
Just sit down there on your table. Everybody, see it open.
Probably about right.
They bid on CRS2, $1.92 per gallon, CRS2P, 270 gallons, AEP, 267 a gallon, CSS1H, $1.2 a gallon, and MS2, 262 a gallon. They bid on coal mix type D, $85 a ton. Appears that's all they bid on.
What is the rest of that, then?
It's just the whole packet.
They attached the whole.
And they just gave a price for...
They have no bid on everything except the one that I mentioned. A bid from Edmund Jinsky. Base material, type A, grade 2, 875 a ton. That was the only one they bid on. Actually, they have a bid from... From Mark Marietta. They bid on base material, grade 2, 775 a ton, and type A, crust limestone, grade 2, 1862 a ton. I will mention that some of them have various FOB locations cited that will be taken into account when bid reviewed. Appears that's all Mark Marietta's bid on. And a bid from, appears to be from Dig Commercial, BIDG. Base material, grade 1, $9 a ton, grade 2, $9 a ton. FOB Kerr County, grade 1, $30 a ton, grade 2, $30 a ton. Then on trap rock, grade 3, $60 a ton, trap rock, grade 4, $60 a ton, no bid on grade 5. Uncoded paving rock, grade 3, $80 a ton, grade 4, $80 a ton, and grade 5, no bid. That builds a little last round of... Next, looks like it's from P-Square Emulsion Plants. Emulsion oils, CRS2, 299 a gallon, AEP, 2.04 a gallon, CSS-1H, 269 a gallon, MS-2, 282 a gallon. I will note that might look like they substituted something different for each of the ones we specified. For example, under CRS-2, they have in parentheses, CWE-2. It does look that. Bids are evaluated. That's it from P-Square. On emulsion oils, they added one TRFOG at 2.6, 2.163 per gallon, CRS-2, $2.01 per gallon, CRS-2P, 231 a gallon, AEP, no bid, CSS-1H, 206 a gallon, MS-2, no bid. That's all they bid on. Paving aggregates, trap rock, grade 3, 3951 per ton, trap rock, grade 4, 4151 per ton, trap rock, grade 5, 451 per ton. Uncoded paving rock, grade 3, no bid, uncoated paving rock, grade 4, 3587 a ton, uncoated paving rock, grade 5, no bid. Base material, FOB Suppliers Plant, grade 2, $8 per ton, FOB Kerr County, $20.13 per ton. Hot Mix Coal Lay, asphaltic concrete pavement, black base, type AA, 5854. This is at the type AA... This is at the type AA plus 64.54 per ton. Coal mix type CC, 58.54 a ton, type CC plus 64.54 a ton. Coal mix type D, 61.54, coal D plus 67.54 per ton. This is the same as the other check. It's all Vulcan. From Alan Keller. Paving aggregates, uncoated paving rock, grade three, $35 a ton, uncoated paving rock, grade four, $35 a ton, uncoated paving rock, grade five, $35 a ton. Base material, FOB Suppliers Plant, grade one, $850 a ton, no bid on grade two. FOB Kerr County, grade one, $16 a ton, no bid on grade two. And this is from WeCraft Incorporated. Paving aggregates, uncoated paving rock, $20 per ton, that's for five eighths round. Uncoded paving rock, grade four, $20 per ton, half inch round. Uncoded paving rock, grade five, $20 per ton, three eighths round. And then underneath that, it says, for all three of those, I guess, $25 per ton for crushed. And then there's a price for, I guess, for hauling, trailer, Ford 90 a ton, Tanda, 680 a ton. Base material, FOB Suppliers Plant, inch and a half, and it's like three quarters, well, inch and a half must be 925 a ton. Grade two, they didn't bid, and then three quarter inch down, it's like 1125 per ton. FOB Kerr County, type A, is grade one, 1655 a ton, no bid on grade two, and then three quarter inch down, 1855 a ton. Trailers on them. And then under coal mix type D, $90 per ton, hot mix type D, $65 per ton. I think that's it. And I don't know how you go through all these because they seem to all modify what's asked. But I'd like most to accept all bids referring to Rodent Ridge Department, Rodent Ridge Business Editor to review and come back with a recommendation.
I'll second. Motion made by Commissioner Letts, seconded by Commissioner Harris, to accept all bids and refer them to Rodent Ridge for evaluation and report back to the court. Any discussion? If you're in favor, raise your hand. Five zero. Item 1.21, consider discussing, take appropriate action regarding the approval of the asbestos management plan for the property located at 550 Earl Garrett, which is the future site of the Hill Country Regional Public Defender's Office. I visited with Harvey Brinkman and Bruce Stricki, and we have one small area of flooring back by a closet where the elevator's going that does have asbestos in it. And they asked me whether or not we wanted to encapsulate it, which means cover it, seal it, or remove it. And I said, well, how much does it cost to remove? And they said between $2,500 and $2,600. So, we need to decide, are we going to remove it, or are we going to encapsulate it? It's not that big a deal, but we just had to advise them which way.
Right. And the ceiling, what would that cost? It's just the cost of a new floor, right?
Yeah.
You just cover it up, which is going to be incurred anyway. So I would say we just cover it up. You're going to spend that money anyway.
True. But I look at it as if we ever have to do anything over there again, we're going to have another asbestos issue, draw the permits, do the inspection, and we go again over one little patch of asbestos for $2,500. I recommend we just get rid of it. Pay it out.
So...
And it's going to be another court that gets this problem.
Right.
In 10, 15 years.
Well, I'm thinking down the road even sooner than that. When we start deciding who's going to move into that building and making some renovations, if we have to make any renovations, are we going to have to do another asbestos survey at that point if we don't fix it now?
Whether we encapsulate it or remove it, it satisfies all permit requirements.
For how long?
For the extent of the project that we have.
Yeah. What you're talking about would be, Jonathan, you're talking about if you move the wall or something.
Yeah, change the wall, sheet rock, roof, the ceiling stuff.
Is it in an entryway or a bathroom?
It's in a closet and a bathroom.
A closet and a bathroom. Good to hear. I'd say just encapsulate it.
I don't have a strong opinion.
It's the gift that people can give if they don't get rid of it.
I've seen some of these jobs where they start tearing this stuff up and remodel it. The less you tear it up, the better off you are.
Well, this happens, one of the areas is the closet where they're putting in the elevator, so they had to go in and do that.
And we're sure this is all the reason, the whole building?
They've had, this has been inspected. They've had, this has been going on for several weeks. This is the only thing they found.
That's great. Well, I don't know. I'd do it for $19.99.
I guess I'd go along with the judge. I mean, for $2,600, we know there's no asbestos in the building, anyone wants to do anything with it, we don't have to worry about it.
That's a county employee paycheck.
Yeah, that's true too.
Well, what I would point out on it is, we're going to talk more about the building, so there's subsequent agenda items, but we are able to acquire this building based on these tax anticipation notes that also are on the agenda here in just a minute. And so what we're talking about here is financing whatever we did. This is not really coming directly out of our budget. So, to, and there are going to be other things that have to be done to this building for us to be able to move in, which we also want to be able to do on those tax anticipation notes. So it's not a direct expense long term. I mean, it is $2,600, any way you slice it. Sarah?
The only thing I'll say is when we did the expansion at the jail, we had to actually, even though it was built in 95 and you didn't have all that, had to go back through a whole asbestos study and inspection because we couldn't ever find the records of when it had been done. And the other thing is, if you do it and you get a clean inspection, if they remove it, and you keep track of that inspection, I'm not sure if you have to do it again as long as you can show it. We couldn't show it, okay? But if you do it and you just encapsulate it, then there's always going to be that note in that inspection that it was there and it was encapsulated and what happened afterwards. And maybe that type of money and what we spent out at the law enforcement center, I'd remove it.
Yeah. And you get a certificate of what happened either way. Either way, it states what happened.
But the difference is, we're going to have to deal with it in the future if we do anything that involves those areas.
Right.
Because it's encapsulated, and they have a record that it's there, it's encapsulated, and we go back through this drill again. If we remove it, then we don't have to do that.
Right. Let's rip the Band-Aid off and go ahead and do it. Get it done.
That motion.
And what was your price again?
Well, did we actually, is this just one guy's cost? That's the way to do it? I mean, is this farmed out or for bids or?
Yeah, it's really under the contract of the person doing the work.
Got you.
This is really coming from Harvey Brinkman and his subcontractors that are working on the building, is where it comes from.
But we end up paying for it.
Right.
I make a lot of sense we approved the $2,600 to remove the asbestos.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Letts, seconded by Commissioner Harris, to approve the removal of the asbestos to Earl Garrett property site. Any discussion? If you're in favor, raise your hand. Against, four one. Item 1.22, discussion regarding the refinanced certificate of obligation and the upcoming tax anticipation notes. We're approaching year end with the purchase of the 16 acres of our Spur 100, which was approved today. We're just about ready to go to the market with these notes, and it looks like the interest rate's probably going to be about 1.25%, from what I'm hearing. I don't think that's going to change appreciably over the next month. The only, and then we're going to also be talking more about our move-in date and some of the things that are going to have to be done in that building, and we want to try to get a handle on that, throw them all into these tax notes. So it's one-stop shop.
This is just information, we'll come back one time, early January, it looks like.
What's the interest rate again, 1.25? 1.25?
1.4%. And so for the public, if inflation is running at 1.8, which is what the Fed's telling us, they're actually paying us to borrow their money at this point because we're only going to pay 1.25 and inflation's going at 1.8. It's an incredible opportunity to do this. Okay, moving on to item 1.23. This is a discussion regarding the opening date for the Hill Country Regional Public Defender's Office. What we're anticipating right now is probably, in terms of moving into the improved space on the second floor, the final home for the PEO, we're targeting probably March 1st. But we're also looking with the hiring of John Bull, being able to probably get our temporary office up and running by January 4th. That's the goal. Just keep everybody in, look on that. And there will be, as we talk about doing that, I think we're probably going to be looking at some painting, some carpeting, floor covering of some sort to get us into the building. I think we all realize that if we don't do it now, and if we don't do it with these tax anticipation bonds, then we'll probably never get it painted, and we'll probably never get the floor covered when we're done because it's such a hassle to do these things. So it just seems, makes sense to do it on the front of here.
Judge, does it make sense to add this to Harvey Brinkman's agreement? My answer is yes, it does. It could not be.
I thought this was being done then.
No.
Why would this?
We're doing ADA. We're doing the ADA compliance.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's really, under the current contract with Brinkman, it's limited to redoing the restrooms, make them ADA, putting in the elevator, adding an additional stairwell that is required for, or stair access outside of the building.
Like a fire escape?
Yeah. It's a code department. And that's really it. There's no cosmetic renovation included in their number. I walked through the building last week, spent some time over there, and opened up a lot of the offices, and some of them have carpet that really needs to come out. And I talked to the judge a little bit about it too, and as I said, you know, it seems to me, even if it delays moving in a little bit, and I think this will cause a little bit of a delay potentially, it sure makes sense to get it ready to go now rather than trying to come out of our operating budget later. Right now, we're rolling into the financing. And the building can be painted, and it doesn't need a whole lot. Door hardware is also on the current bill. And there is going to be a cost that's not included right now on security and some wiring for computers and some of that stuff that we're already working on. So, but it makes sense as much as possible to include it all under Brinkman's agreement so that they can hire additional contractors right now rather than, they're not going to want two different, we don't want two different contractors in that building, or two different general contractors at the same time.
So is our idea to get enough office space there that Mr. Bull gets situated and has a base of operation?
There's a...
There's a, it's actually a suite.
Right.
The hall has been, door's been placed at the end of both halls. It's a short section.
But the idea is that he, what I mean is, that he gets in there, it doesn't have to be finished out. They can start with a few offices renovated.
It's downstairs. It's downstairs, it'd be on the northwest corner of the building. There'll be enough office space for Bull and office manager and maybe a couple attorneys and staff personnel, just open, get the thing open.
And then we do the rest as we go, or we don't really have a comprehensive plan on that, do we?
Well, that's one of the things, we're going to meet with Mr. Bull tomorrow. He's coming up here, and we'll start walking through all the things that have to be done over there. We've got to order furniture, we've got to get computers, we've got to have office equipment, we've got to get these job postings posted. I mean, he's going to hit the ground running hard.
Yeah.
And it's all, all that comprehensive planning is going to be on his plate.
Yeah, but we're looking at getting, you know, judges, myself, Bruce, primarily the ones that are working.
And Judge Williams.
And Judge Williams, but I mean, on the operation side, to get the building ready is largely up to the county. And for example, went out to, Shane and I went out to our old furniture piles, went through what we have out there and came across six or seven desks that are really nice. Shane says they are property of the 216th. I've already contacted Lucy Wilkie, and she says we can, she'll surplus them so we can move them in. So we have furnishings for six desks. There's a couple, there's probably a desk sufficient for Mr. Bull and a small conference table over there, really nice conference table, it used to be in the judge's office. So there's some, but we're still going to need quite a bit of furniture, but we'll have enough to get started.
Well, and so that everyone knows, not only the county employees but the public, we're going to do this same scavenging with the other counties. Everybody's looking into what we've got that we can use, and it all going to be contributed to the PEO, so.
And there's some out there that Shane and I looked at that we need to surplus a bunch of that junk. It is pure junk out there, some of that old metal furniture that Dan and stuff, I mean...
And I think all of that will probably occur simultaneously as we go in and put the new sprinklers in that building and the cyclone fencing for the storage facility, the storage units we're going to create over there. So we'll be cleaning that out at the same time as we finish it up.
I think Garden's doing a security deal, cheap offs, because that'd be a separate contract, because they'll do the installation and all that themselves, not...
We know that privately.
Right, that was supposed to be.
So that's the hardware you were talking about, the door hardware?
And well, also all the doorknobs on it, they're all pretty old. My understanding is that they're replacing the door hardware. And there's going to be some other renovations in there. Question I have, I guess to the county attorney, have some of this work, like the painting, how do we go after doing the change order with the seller that we want this done before we move in? I mean, how do we?
Say again?
Do we just do a change order with the seller being Mr. Brinkman Group?
For?
To do the painting and the carpeting? I mean, how do we get that done quickly under that contract?
That would be a separate contract.
I think it has to be a separate contract.
With them?
I don't think it has to be necessarily, but it might be efficient to have it with them, but it's sort of then depends on...
You need to make a change order.
Then it depends on the cost to the county for those...
Roll it up.
I don't imagine it would be more than $50,000, but...
Well, I'm thinking it will be more than $50,000.
Oh, you do?
Yeah. But that's the question, is that they're doing a lot of renovations already to the building. I mean, they're already, well, extra around to $50,000 on the renovations, so...
That's ADA mitigation stuff.
Well, part of it...
That's not the same as painting and changing doorknobs and...
Well, painting, changing doorknobs to me is equivalent to painting.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
It's not the same as making sure you got an elevator for ADA compliance.
Right. I'm just wondering...
Our agreement with them is, it's cost, actual cost pass-through.
Yes.
And we've got a contract for them to do that. If we want to enter to an additional contract, a letter agreement or whatever, add to the scope of work that we want them to do, I think that's pretty easily done, so that, but... So that, but we just have to proceed.
Well, my question is this, if we did it that way, regardless of cost and your discomfort zone, that, then we don't have to take bids if we did it that way. They, we have a contract with them.
But it was for a specific ADA compliance.
But we, and change orders, you know.
And now that we want this work done, I don't know, I, I think it would be safer to do it. You think that the cost of what y'all want to do now is going to be more than $50,000, I think it'd be safer to go out for bid and do that.
It's going to be more than that, for sure.
I don't know how you, how do you go out for bid, I mean, I know how you go out for bid.
Well, I can tell you right now, they're not going to want to supervise it. We go out for bid, we own it.
Right, so I'm saying, and that, it can't be done until after we take possession, which is going to be March.
Now, is that still on our 80-20 deal, or are we paying 20% of that as part of the grant?
Well, it goes into, not part of the grant, I mean, it's part of the cost and then we recoup a portion of it through rent.
No.
Well, not directly, but indirectly.
Indirectly. The rent that's going to be determined is going to be a fair market value rent, on a price per square foot basis, just like, just like you commercial leasing. That's going to be the, that will be the agreement between Hill Country Regional Public Defender's Office and Kirk County. Because the PEO will lease the space from us. That, that's how we're going to recover this. It's not technically part of the grant. The grant is for the budget to run the office and pay, and pay rent.
Oh, right, and the rest comes from, yeah.
And then we can have this paid for on a.
So if.
Seems to me like we're buying a building, okay, we're authorizing them to make ADA changes as part of the purchase. So all we're doing is changing the purchase price. If we were to do this by requirements changes, seem like a small change.
The scope is different.
Huh?
The scope is different, the scope of that need is different.
Contracts change all the time as far as changing requirements, it's called requirements creep, right? I mean, it's common, common activity, requirements creep. So we're letting the requirements change slightly on a, on a big purchase.
But technically, we can't have anybody do it until we own it.
Right.
We don't own it until they finish.
This occurs to me that if we're talking about doing it piecemeal, we might not ever get up to that $50,000 threshold. So, because we have said we're going to have some of it done now.
It still gets up to $50,000, you still, the bid requirement doesn't.
I don't know why $50,000 even comes into play here. We're, we're purchasing a building, they're making some modifications. We have a new requirement, a new requirement on the purchasing of the building.
If it's done that way, if it's not done that way, then you mentioned the, that we'd have to go out for bid.
Yeah, and it's a.
You wouldn't if you're doing it the way we talked about.
We're adding a grill guard and a bed liner to our pickups. That's what we're doing.
I didn't hear what you said, I'm sorry.
Right.
We're adding a grill guard and a bed liner to our pickup.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
But, but Ken Stolpe's going to do it anyway.
Ken Stolpe would send it out to somebody else, that's the issue.
I would, I would recommend two things. One, I need to look at the contract we have in specific, it doesn't just say fix ADA. It lists specific items in there which are a lot broader than just ADA. And I need to look at that contract first. And the other thing we need to do is probably have Peter Lewis go through the building and tell us what he recommends as a scope of work, of additional work to make, make it usable.
Right.
Because in my opinion right now, it's not usable because of the carpet.
If we were to do it, we can't do it until we own the building.
Right.
So therefore, it's.
Can we amend, can we not amend the contract?
Sure.
On the purchaser, to add to the additional work to make the building usable to us?
All right. Separate contract opens up everything else. It does make sense, but I still think if you're going to do it the way we said, if you're going to do it piecemeal, you just.
Can't do it piecemeal, it's the aggregate cost of the remodel. We're already over, we're already at $250,000.
But we just discussed having an office big enough for Mr. Bull to get in, having that part of it remodeled and doing the rest of it.
We're buying, we're buying a building, we're buying a building and they're making changes. So this is some additional changes where we purchased the building.
I understand, I agree with Tom.
Yeah, but you're, you're talking infrastructure stuff here and ADA stuff. Chris, what you mentioned earlier, for example, with computers, whether it's got Cat 5 in it or not or whatever, all that has to be taken care of, and that's basically infrastructure, it's not remodeling.
That's after we buy the building.
We're working, we're doing it now.
Part of the deal.
Part of it, I mean, they're looking at how to do it right now. I mean, the bathrooms have all been changed, you know, not all of them have been changed. To me, if it's a way to do it through amended contract, it's certainly a lot quicker.
Well, this was a discussion item and we've cussed and discussed.
Yeah, we have.
And it seems, it sounds like to me we need to bring more information back to court, discuss it again.
Look at it.
Physical county attorney, make sure we're doing this the right way. Okay, with that, we'll move on to item 1.24. Mr. Wilkie, I know you've been waiting. Consider discussing take appropriate action to appoint Kenneth Wilkie to the position of Kirk County Constable Precinct 3 due to Paul Gonzalez's inability to take office effective January 1, 2021.
I put it on the agenda, I think everyone is aware of the situation that Paul notified us of due to personal reasons primarily. He feels obligated to continue his work with KISD for the time being. He requested not, or said he could not take office. I'm not sure how long that's going to be. I talked to Ken, he's willing to continue to serve. It would be for a two-year period, up to a two-year period.
Till the next election.
Till the next election. He's willing to serve. Spent probably way too much time between Ken and others talking about when to put it on the agenda. But it makes sense to do it now so he, his bond and his, his office license and all that continues as effective January 1, to be there for the square end on January 1.
And. In order to keep the continuity, we've got to get the bond by January 1.
Right. And county attorney, I think, has agreed with all this. So with that all said, I'll make a motion that we appoint Ken Wilkie to serve the unexpired term in the Constable Precinct 3.
I'll second, second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Letts, seconded by Commissioner Ballew, to appoint Kenneth Wilkie as the Constable for Precinct 3 starting January 1, 2021. Bonded place before.
And I will make a comment, I talked to Paul Thursday or Friday last week, and he's still, is very interested in trying to serve at some point. He'd love to be the constable, but he just feels a strong allegiance to the kids in KISD and they do not have a, someone really to take his spot right now. And these hats off to him for, you know, really looking at the big picture in his mind, so.
Okay, any other discussion?
Well, thank you, Ken, for giving us a sleeping in on New Year's Day. I know you're looking forward to that this year.
Any words, Ken?
Thanks.
But seriously, we really appreciate you stepping up on this item.
Yeah, I'm good. No issues. I don't mind helping, it's whatever you're for.
Oh, we appreciate that, that enthusiasm is hard to beat.
Everyone in favor, raise your hand. unanimous, five zero. Thank you. Now we have 1.25, this is Mrs. Soldan, here she is, okay. Consider discussing take appropriate action on county treasurer's request to temporarily change current part-time position to full-time to train with retiring employees for approximately four weeks. This will not require additional funding on treasurer's budget. Trace this on.
Yes, sir, so my, my chief deputy is retiring, my part-time has agreed to take over the position. She works 29 hours per week, and so really what I'm asking for is the additional 11 hours per week for approximately four hours, four, four weeks, so that she can do the job that she's hired to do now, but then train with my retiring chief deputy. And the budget, I've gone over it with the auditor, and my budget will cover that additional time.
I move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Letts, seconded by Commissioner Harris, to approve changing the current part-time position to a full-time position to train with retiring employee as presented. Any discussion? If you're in favor, raise your hand. unanimous, five zero.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll go into the approval docket, 1.1, let's pay the bills.
Good morning. Invoices for today's consideration include $176,607.58 for Kirk County, $3,646.28 for adult probation, $1,275.10 for the airport, $10,358.94 for juvenile probation. The district clerk fees, $5,535.68, and county clerk fees of $157.38.
We'll pay the bills as presented by the officer. Motion's been made by Commissioner Moser, seconded by Commissioner Ballew, to pay the bills as presented. Any discussion? If you're in favor, raise your hand. Five zero. 2.2, budget amendments?
Fair and all.
2.3, late bills?
Yes, we have $10,455.38 for Kirk County, $273.93 for adult probation, $86.49 for the airport, and $22,500 for district clerk fees.
I move for approval.
Second. Motion being made by Commissioner Harris, seconded by Commissioner Letts, to approve late bills as presented. Any discussion? If you're in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, five zero. Auditor reports.
There.
Before you leave, I forgot to mention when we were talking about the tax notes. Part of the tax notes that we have issued.
The refunding bonds.
And they're the refunding, the, the refinance of the certificates of obligation on the youth event center. And the report that I asked her to make, that I forgot to mention, is that that refinanced saved Kirk County over the life of those, those obligations, $611,000.
Good deal.
$100,000.
It was really good. When y'all initially approved, you know, refunding, we, it was set to be somewhere around $346,000, so we were considerably more than that. So it was good.
And that is, that is a good report.
Yes.
All right, do we know how we came out the end of the last fiscal year?
We are still working on it, we're down to the last few every week, I think this is going to be it, and we find a few more interests we need to make. But we're still on target to make it by the end of this year.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay, 2.5, except monthly reports.
Yes, for November 2020, standard monthly report from Constable Precinct 1 Tommy Rodriguez, Constable Precinct 2 Kyle Snyder, and Constable Precinct 4 Gene Huffaker. Vines, judgments, and jury fees collected. JP 1 Mitzi French, JP 2 J.R. Home, JP 3 Kathy Mitchell, County Clerk Jackie J.D. Doughty, District Clerk Dawn Lance, Animal Control Services Director Reagan Gibbons, Environmental Health OSSF Director Ashley Batters, and Continuing Education transcript for tax assessor collector Bob Reeves. I move for approval.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Harris and seconded by Commissioner Ballew to accept the monthly reports as presented. Any discussion? If you're in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, five on. Court orders.
Court orders from our December 7th meeting, special session, 38471 and 38478, all of them to be in order. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Letts, seconded by Commissioner Harris, to approve the court orders as presented. Any discussion? If you're in favor, raise your hand. Five zero. Information agenda, or status reports from department heads. Shane.
Good morning, gentlemen, I'd like to give you an update on our generator, it's up and running 100% now, so any emergency power loss, the generator's going to come on. So we did our final testing this Saturday, everything's golden. At that current time, the generator's running at 15%, which, you know, that could change if we had during the day, it could come on during the day, all the ACs are running, so it would move that percentage up. We're also going to start a, a monthly routine where we do a full load test, similar to what we do at the jail and also the juvenile facility, make sure everything works, runs when it's supposed to. And this is also an update on, on Tuesdays at 8 o'clock, or 8 a.m., the generator will come on, exercise, not under load. That's something to keep the fluids moving and make sure that the unit stays up and running.
So you do that monthly, is that?
Well, we do, we would do a full load test.
Full load test monthly.
Monthly, and it, it comes on and exercises once a week.
Okay, but full load test once a month.
Yes, sir, and I would probably, I would recommend that I do that at 7:30 in the morning so I didn't, so I don't disrupt anybody's work or anything. But what would happen had, if the generator does come on during the day, you have power loss, there's going to be a 20-second delay where there's no lights, nothing works, and then the generator will kick on and run for the duration until the load comes on, everything is back to normal. And then it would be another 20-second where the lights are off and it goes back to the city power when it comes back on.
When you do a full load test, does that 20-second interruption happen?
Yes, yes.
So does that do anything to computers?
That I don't know, I couldn't, I don't know much for IT.
Yeah. You know the answer.
I would think it would.
The one thing I would say that we had to do out of sheriff's office in jail at every full load test is you had to actually go unplug all the copy machines, okay?
Yeah.
We were, we were able to survive all right with the computers if they had battery backups attached to them, but you don't have that. Otherwise, they all need to be shut down and you have to unplug the, for some reason, it messes with the, that break will mess with the programming of your copy machines. So Shane saying he wants to do it at 10, or at 7:30 in the morning, I may not recommend, it's easy for us to run around where it was and unplug all the copy machines. I think you need a time to where your department heads can make sure, because you've got copy machines all over this court house, can make sure that those get unplugged and that everybody that doesn't have a battery backup to their computer actually logs off and shuts down that computer.
Yeah, we need to, we need to have a checklist.
Yeah.
Before we do that, you know, that full load test, to make sure we've got everything isolated, turned off, and these can be, or we're going to screw something up.
But it does need to run full load test, I would recommend everything, we do them out there, we have to. The only thing I'm surprised, and I don't know if the, if the electric company can, can work on that, at the jail, it had, it can only be off for 10 seconds. Okay, it requires everything on that switch over to be done within 10 seconds. It's required by state jail commission, but it was able to be done. And that really is a big difference because you would be surprised how dark it gets in here.
But 10, 10 seconds is, is a lifetime as far as something that, that can't be turned on and turned off if you lose power.
Right.
And maybe, maybe everything can, okay? It doesn't bother my printers at home if I lose power, you know, for whatever reason, it comes back on okay. So you, we need to check with Bruce and find out what it would do, an interruption like that.
Can we not put USPs on the computers also, I mean, on the.
It's just money. The SPS, it's just money.
Well, you can plug in more than one thing into one.
Depending on the size.
There they are.
Most of the desktop units, you just just run.
We're talking about 20 seconds.
Yeah.
So, yeah, you, you can plug your computer in, the printer in.
No, you don't ever plug a printer in a UPS.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, 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 that, that would kill one.
Okay. So, I won't, I won't get into why that is, so you have to physically unplug.
Yes.
How many printers do we have?
At least one for every department.
I have two in my office.
And it's not just, it's not printer printer, it's.
It's the big copy machine.
It's the big copy machine.
The regular printers, they can go off and come back.
Air fryer.
Yeah. So it's like the one in.
The big coalescing guys that are really.
Plug your back up here.
It's because they're computer, but I don't know why they wouldn't be able to.
They just don't handle it, they just don't handle it.
They don't like.
Well, I think before you do the full load test, I think we need to make a survey and have a checklist of what needs to be done.
Good.
Yeah.
And then announce it by email the day before or something, that you're going to do.
First thing to do is make sure you understand all the actions that need to be taken before you do a full load test.
Right.
And then follow that list.
What I would recommend, Bruce worked on, is something the security group, we all tried to get to, where we can do a kind of all call over the current phone system we have, you know, we're. over the current phone system we have, you know, we're trying to make that work. And they say they've got it worked, but we don't really have a way of trying it out. So I would recommend, just to make sure it always works, that at the same time, the day before, or that day, that you're getting ready to do the, the test, announce over that all-call system that you're going to do that test, and for the department heads to unplug their copy machines.
Now, if you're gonna do it at seven-thirty in the morning.
Or you check.
Unplug them when they leave the day before, exactly, and then when they get there, they can plug them on.
All I'm saying is have a checklist before you do the full load test, make sure everything's done.
Some of that stuff, you can't do that, because some of it is emails and faxes come through that copy machine, so, you know, if they're getting faxes all night long, that different, you can't unplug it and wait to plug it back in.
Have a list.
I have a quick question. How soon would a department know when they can plug in the copier again? I mean, you just.
Soon as the power comes back on after that ten or twenty-second wait, then it's, then it's okay to turn it back on.
Well, that can reach the cap one.
Well, no, no, the.
The second one.
What you, it's the second one, the generator, your power will go off, okay? And it needs to be unplugged by that time, alright? And then the power will come on ten, ten or twenty seconds late. And then after twenty minutes or whatever, it runs, alright? Your power's gonna go off again, and then it's gonna come back on. After it comes back on that second time, you can plug everything back in.
Look, let's start working here, let, let Bruce develop a list, what needs to be done before you do the full load test.
We've got a whole month to go anyhow, so.
I'm not talking about, I'm just talking about the action, have a procedure.
Yeah.
I agree with Mr. Moser on that, and the other thing to add to that list that you all worked on is one of you two needs to go to each department head and tell them which printer specifically, not just say printers, because that means different.
That's what I'm saying, Bruce needs to, I mean, list thirty-eight printers that we have around here that fall into this, whatever the number is. Who's responsible and who's gonna know that it's turned off before you do the full load test?
Okay.
There you go.
Well, just to get to this point, thank you, Sheriff, and thank you, Bruce, thank you, Shane. These guys cooperated to get us to this point and to protect the county workers. I'm down.
Shane, you thought this was gonna be a thirty-second report, didn't you?
I thought it was gonna be good.
But I'm not gonna let.
Thank you for what you've done.
One more thing, while, while we still have you here, Shane, will you come tell what the plans are for our handicap van parking?
Okay, also working with Roden Bridge, they had a vendor come by, and to redo that handicap parking spot, we can get it done as a demo, which would means free to, for the van parking, to make sure it's, we're ADA compliant. We'd get the materials done for free, and which we would also, with myself and some representatives from Roden Bridge, we'd watch this vendor apply this material, and we'd also, would then be able to do our own handicap parking and put our own parking stripes down, you know, like in small parking areas, but in the using a thermal plastic material, which you, when you put it on, on the ground, you, you use a burner, a heater, whatever, par burner type, uh, equipment. And it, and it lasts about six times longer than your normal paint job. So it also has a reflective material in, so non-slip, reflective, pretty good material, so.
If not, if, if everybody's not aware of what happened, putting that generator in and encroached on our handicap van parking, and so that was the first, next domino that we had tripped, so that's the deal.
Like, good news is that part of it would at least be free for that one, one time, you know, for a demo, it wouldn't cost us anything.
But do they get to put an advertising sign up there?
No, 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 it's kinda like, well, they're selling, we're also trying to sell us their services also, so that's one reason why, you know, they, they would do the demo. But, you know, after speaking with Roden Bridge, they're pretty much on board with getting the material and the, and the, and the other equipment needed to do that, where we can do this anywhere we wanted to or needed to. I mean, if I needed to put new park, or, you know, handicap parking zones at the, at, at the jail, for instance, I could do that, I wouldn't have to contract that out to somebody else to do it. It would just cost me the materials and our labor, you know, and Ballew would be, would be done with it.
No special applicators or anything like that?
No, just that, that, just to eat, um.
Yep, you'll find out. And what about painting the generators?
That was, I'm, I'm gonna, that's on next to all my agenda.
Not that it's not real purty. But it's not real purty.
I, I didn't wanna have, try to have anybody paint it until we were done pulling panels off, you know, doing everything, so, uh, I was, I was waiting until we got done with that, so.
That makes sense. Put a picture of Rusty on it.
No.
Retired Sheriff of the Year.
Bullet holes are coming.
Kelly, where are you going?
I just wanted to say on the, the, the material that Shane's talking about, you wouldn't want to do a whole entire parking lot that way. The city uses it on their crosswalks, but to do a whole entire parking lot, you probably want to have a parking lot painted with a machine. But for small jobs, it's really, really good, they've got some other materials that I think Roden Bridge might be interested in. But we gave back all of our striping money, and so I had told Shane, you know, I won't be having the strippers come this budget year. So if it's something that needs to be done now, which the answer was yes, I said this probably could be an alternate, and it will work perfect for this type of project, so. But I wanted to make sure you all understood that I wouldn't recommend going and doing, or, or thinking that Roden Bridge is gonna start doing their striping that way. It would take you forever doing that, but it's real good if you've got little places you need to redo. Or if we even have a, a base failure section, and we need to put striping back into place, just, you know, certain amount of feet, you could do that as a temporary fix, so you could get the striper out there after you've put a fresh seal coat on it, and so it has its place, but I wouldn't use it everywhere, so.
Very good. Thank you, Shane.
You're welcome.
I think we're gonna hold off on the bids, we've got way more than we expected. Most of it is pretty cut and dry, but I think that the base material, it's always kinda confusing, everybody bids it a little bit different, and I would feel more comfortable going back to the office and doing a tally sheet that I could hand out to you, and then coming back to court and awarding them.
Okay, very good.
So you're gonna wait till the twenty-eighth?
Whatever date you all would like for me to come back on that.
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth.
Okay.
I don't think we're in much business that day, but.
Yeah, if you guys are good with awarding.
Yeah, this is a quick one usually.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Item three point two, status reports from elected officials. Okay, three point three, status reports from liaison commissioners.
Uh, something real quick on economic development, not to get into specifics, but probably very soon there'll be some economic development announcements on airport, new businesses, which could be really good. And the other thing is, under the category of economic development, also concept, uh, a potential new housing development in Precinct Two come forward before long, I think, with that. So probably the next few weeks, see some really good things. That's it.
On Friday, I spoke with Michael Haynes with the extension, and he thinks it's gonna be more like March now for us getting an agent. And I, I told him we weren't in any rush if it, we wanna get a good one, and he agreed.
And by the way, you went in person, I, I watched it, I know you watched it too, but I learned more about feral hogs and coyotes.
That's a new trick.
And, 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 and the way he would just say, whoop, just kill them. Just kill them.
And there are more.
Comment on, uh, I've been talking with Jennifer a little bit about this, and we put in our budget merit pay. But we have never come up with a policy or even discussed it since we put it in the budget last August, July. It'll be on, it's just, you think about it over the holidays, it'll be on our January agenda, second meeting in January first, I wanted us to to figure out if we're gonna do it, what the process will be, so we'll be thinking about how to tackle this one, because.
It's problematic.
It's always problematic.
That's why I'm giving you a month's notice.
I don't think it, I think it's something that should be completely scrapped.
What we've got in the budget.
Yeah, we'll discuss it, we'll discuss it on, in January, I just wanna let everybody know.
Merry Christmas. Any other reports? We have nothing for executive session. So court is adjourned, you go to lunch.
Got it down.
So my wife will be here by noon, you got two minutes.